This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Um. Uh. Uh. Excuse me, seventy-seven North Water. Um. Is coming off the agenda at the request of. Uh. The representative of seventy-seven North Water. And twenty-two Lounges. Uh, is also coming off the agenda. Uh, again, at the request of twenty-two Lounges. Uh, so we have a somewhat shorter uh. Uh, agenda, but I am expecting. Uh, that our, uh, the second public hearing. Um. Is going to take some time. Um. So in order to free up as much time as possible for that, I simply ask. That if if the members of the commission don't have substantive questions about the remaining items. Um. Let's not ask them. Uh, let's uh, let's run through these, give them um. Um, a fair hearing. Uh. But we don't have to. Uh, go over them in um. Uh, detail with the microscope. Uh, these remaining items are by and large fairly, fairly straightforward. Um, with that, um, let's, uh, let's do a roll call.
Certainly, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Rowena. And Mr. Moushak.
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
And Mr. Shulman, and I, and I believe Mr. Williams is seated this evening.
Yeah, I, uh, I thought I made that point. Um. He is seated for the entire meeting because of the absences, and yes, I'm, I'm here as well. Um. With that, the first item, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four, special appropriation, Norwalk Fire Department. Special appropriation request for roof replacement and purchase of new vehicles. This is very similar to the request we had. It was either our last meeting or the meeting before, at which the police department. Was requesting to move some funds around so that they could purchase some vehicles. Um. Uh. Mr. Conti, uh, you representing the department?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody. Um, we're requesting additional funding for the, for the roof. Replacement for Station Five, that's our Meadow Street Station right now. Uh, that building was built in nineteen-seventy, and after. Doing some review, we had, uh, we initially had budgeted about a hundred fifty thousand dollars there, and after review. We found that there were a lot of code violations, there were a lot of things that needed to be replaced in the building. Had been sort of, there had been a lot of patching done over the years, and the architect advised us this would be the. By far the best way to go about doing it, the most cost-effective approach, and, um, you know, provided. There's a multiple skylights, I believe, four inside on top of the building, those were never, those are the original nineteen-seventies, and they had no fall protection. And they were, there was like lichen in between the, 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 the Plexiglas, so we. We were going to replace all of them, we're gonna, uh. We're gonna provide hatch, uh, skylight safety rails that, so we can actually have access to the roof properly by code. And, um. It's also going to provide the, uh. The adequate minimum, or at least limit, I should say, insulation for the roof. Um, and, and we really came, we really finalized that decision to try to go for the full replacement after we, we spoke with South Norwalk Electric. And, um, we've, we've been researching pretty heavily, uh, the idea of solar panels on the firehouses, and they said. You, you, you can't even, it's not even an option until, until you have a full roof replacement, and then you would consider doing that. So we went ahead and we got with an arc, with our, our architect, we consulted, and, and this is where, uh, we, we came up with, with the bid.
Um. Any questions? If not, um. Can I have a motion to approve the request?
I make a motion, Mike.
Right, Mr. Moushak has made a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, well, Mr. Rowena and Mr. Williams both seconded. Um, I think we can, um, unless there are additional questions, we can do this with a show of hands. Um. Are there additional questions? I don't see any. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Um, the, um. Second item, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-seven. Elizabeth Mello, sixty-four Wall Street. Live music request for Dahlia's Restaurant. Um. Who is representing the restaurant?
Elizabeth is here, uh, Chairman Shulman, but I can kind of go over it if you'd like, pretty simple request.
Okay.
Um, so you guys are familiar with live music requests, um, many restaurants make them, so what's required is they submit a sound report. To staff, and then we forward that to you, um, sound report has to show that they comply with a noise, Norwalk Noise Ordinance. Um, in which case, Ms. Mellos did. Um, it was shown that ninety decibels. Inside the restaurant would technically comply with the noise ordinance, but eighty-five was kind of a. A safe bet to, to not exceed eighty-five decibels, and they would kind of be guaranteed to comply with the noise, what, Norwalk Noise Ordinance.
Um, are there any, any questions regarding this?
I just have a quick question, Lou, on the previous one, if I'm looking at the memo we got from staff, there was also a. Comment about purchasing a new vehicle, is that no longer part of the previous application with the fire department?
Um.
I can speak on that, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, uh, this is Ed McCabe, Assistant Chief of the Fire Department, we. We do have the request for the vehicles in, um, I can go over that briefly now, or we can go back to it, whatever is your pleasure on that.
Well, we've all, we've already, um, voted to approve. Um. The additional funds, uh.
Okay.
Steve Kleppen, I'd rely on, um, your advice regarding how we should handle that.
If that was all part of the same motion and the same item, I'd say the, the action's already taken, I mean, I think if it's just answering a question, you know. For informational purposes, that's fine, but it depends on, you know, if the item was worded such that. That was included in the resolution, then I would say best not to revisit it.
Okay. Nick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what, what are these cars?
Uh. The fire department, uh, got approved previously, uh, in this year's budget for. Three Ford Mavericks for the Inspection Bureau for the Fire Inspectors. Uh, before that order could be placed, uh, Ford due to production problems. Um, canceled the Ford Maverick line of vehicles before our order could be put in. Uh, therefore, we started looking around, similar to the police department, as to what vehicles were available for us to purchase. Uh, and we started to look at the Ford Explorers, uh, which were available at the time. Uh, however, they were more expensive, so we had to approach, uh. Basically requested extra twenty-five thousand dollars as an appropriation, uh, to be able to afford, uh, the more expensive vehicle so that we can fill those spots in the fleet.
Are these hybrids at all, or are they just straight?
Uh, there are no, uh, the Ford, Ford right now, we can't order the hybrids, um, they're very limited as to what is available. So these would be straight Ford Explorers, uh, you know, base model Ford Explorers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nick, thanks for pointing that out. Okay, um. Um, is there anything else, Brian, on, um, sixty-four Wall Street?
No, that's the gist of it, um.
Okay. Um, Mike, uh, you had indicated earlier that you just wanted to make a. A comment about, a general comment about this.
Oh, sure, uh, uh, if you could. Brian, just remind anyone who comes in, uh, for the live music. It's in the regulation, but, uh, I think it's gotten a little lax on Washington Street, is that they have to keep windows and doors closed. Uh, and live music includes DJs. Uh, it gets really noisy down on Washington Street with windows open. Uh, and, uh, so of course that's a violation, but, uh. Hard to enforce at eleven o'clock at night, I realize. Uh, but, uh, yeah, if, that's the comment I wanted to make, was just remind. Any applicant, uh, applying for live music, that, that. It's really important that they keep their windows and doors closed when the live music is playing. Uh, because there's residences and, uh, in the case of Washington Street Restaurants. That have people sitting outside and they're blasted out and. Don't want to sit outside across the street from one of these clubs. That's playing the live music, and of course the restaurants have music too, some of them. Uh, but, uh, anyway, uh, that's all.
Yeah, you know, the larger question here, and it's not something we can answer tonight, or. Really, we need to discuss tonight, uh, and that is, we, we, we don't have any enforcement power when it comes to live music. So the question is, should, should this even be something that we address? I mean, right now, we're required to, but should we be required to? Um. That, that may be something we want to talk about, uh, as we, uh, begin to review. Uh, uh, the, uh, updated regulations that'll be coming to us. Nonetheless, we have in front of us. Um, Elizabeth Mello's request, sixty-four Wall Street, uh, from my reading of the materials. Um, we really don't have very much flexibility, uh, they see, they appear to. Uh, even though the place isn't open yet, uh, they appear to, uh, meet, uh, the requirements, um. Uh, for permitting, uh, live music. Uh, so I would ask is, uh, is there a motion, uh, to approve this request? Uh, Richard has moved it, is there a second? Uh, Mike has seconded along with Galen, and I think Darius was about to, if it went on much longer. Uh, again, I think we can do this with a show of hands, uh, all those in favor. Uh, it, um. It's unanimous. Okay. Good, uh, now we, um.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Uh, now we, we go on to, uh. Uh, the, the, uh, larger, uh, more. Uh, substantial issue for the evening. Um. And that is, um, twenty-twenty-two dash oh-nine, uh, RM, this is going to be a public hearing. Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning regulations, text amendment to Article ten. Definitions, Article fifty, use regulations, controlling business zones, Article seventy. Use regulations, controlling industrial zones, Article one-twenty, off-street parking. And loading regulations, and the schedule limiting height and bulk of buildings. Commercial and industrial to create the industrial number-one zone and the industrial number-two zone. In conjunction with the zoning map amendment to rezone certain existing industrial and commercial areas. As industrial number-one or industrial number-two. Um, for members of the public, uh, let me explain how. Um. Public hearings are run. I believe this evening, uh, Mr. Kleppen. Uh, will, uh, discuss the proposed, uh, new regulations. Um. The commission members have been discussing, uh, at several past meetings. Um, these proposed regulations, so. Uh, among, uh, the commission members, there is a fair amount of familiarity. Um, with these proposed regulations. Um. Nonetheless, uh, during the presentation, uh, commission members are free. Uh, to ask Mr. Kleppen or other staff members, uh, any questions, uh, they have regarding, uh, the regulations. When, uh. Excuse me, when Mr. Kleppen has completed his, uh, presentation. We will open up, uh, the meeting to public comment. Uh, at that time, uh, likely Mr. Baker will. Uh, explain, uh, how to raise your hand and, uh, be recognized, uh, so that you can speak. Um, we do not, uh, place a limit on how long you speak. Uh, but, uh, these new regulations have, um, generated quite a, a bit of interest. Uh, and so we would expect there will be a significant number of, uh, people who want to be heard. And, uh, while that's fine with us. Uh, in order to be heard, we, we ask, uh, that you present your materials. Um, in as succinct a way as you can. While covering all of the points, uh, that are, uh, important to you. Um, if your comments are the same or almost the same. As someone else who's spoken before you. Um, we would appreciate it if you could simply point that out, rather than going over those, uh, points again. Again, in the interest, uh, of, um. Um, allowing, uh, everyone who wishes to speak, uh, uh, that, that opportunity. Um. When, uh, you're speaking, understand. Um, it, this is not a conversation. Um, this is you speaking to, uh, the staff of the zoning commission. Uh, the commissioners, uh, are simply, uh, listening, uh, to that. So that, uh, we can reach, uh, uh, hopefully reach a decision, uh, at the end of, uh, the hearing. Um. We also ask, uh, that people, uh, and I, I, I know that, uh, this for some people is probably a. An emotional issue, but, uh, please, uh, keep your emotions, uh, in check. Uh, inappropriate language, um. Will, uh, require me to, um, uh, cut you off. It's not in your best interest, it's also not in, in, in your best interest in terms of getting us to hear what you want to say. Uh, raising your voice, things like that. Uh, makes it more difficult for us to hear what you're saying. Um, so, uh, we, we ask, uh, that you, uh, speak in a congenial way. Um. Once, uh, everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity. Uh, Mr. Kleppen or other staff members from planning and zoning. Uh, may wish to comment on, uh, the remarks, uh, that have been made. Uh, by, uh, members of the public or representatives, uh, of, uh, businesses, uh, that, um. Are, uh, affected. Keep in mind, again, you have only one opportunity, uh, to speak, so again. Uh, try to be as brief as possible, but make sure you cover everything that's, uh, of importance to you. Uh, in your, in your public, uh, comments. Um. With that, um, unless I have, um, left something out or forgotten something. Um, I'll, uh, ask Mr. Kleppen to, uh, begin his presentation.
Okay, I'm assuming everybody can see that?
Uh, we can.
Sure. Okay, and I think that if that need to blow it up at all, please, um. Please let me know. Um, so just, I'll provide, and I know there's a lot of people here, and I'm sure many of them, uh. Want to address the commission, so I will, uh, not be lengthy, um, this will serve hopefully as kind of an overview of. The process and how we came to the recommendations we came to, and just provide a refresher to the commission as well, since it's been. A couple of months since we last looked at this item. So the, when the two thousand nineteen citywide plan was adopted, and that, for those who weren't familiar with that document, that's. Uh, the Plan of Conservation Development, which is a state-mandated document that the city goes through a process every ten years of updating. Um. It had a lot of goals and aspirations within the plans, um, one of those was to look at. The zoning overall, which the city has undertaken and is in the process of, and more specifically looking at the industrial zoning within the city. Um, so we did undertake that process, uh, there was a committee formed, and the names are on the bottom. Some of them are, are part of this body as well, uh, and, and the, the intent of that plan was to make sure there is enough land available to. Accommodate desired, uh, commercial growth going forward. Identify the types of uses that we want to see in the city going forward, also try to fix historic, um. Conflicts that have occurred between certain land uses, um, and we'll probably talk about a lot of that tonight. That chiefly comes up when we're talking about, um, a lot of times it's, it is contractor yards and where they're located, a lot of times these are. Uses that have been located in legacy areas, um, where either the zoning changed around them, the lane use changed around them. Or the use probably was something else at one time, and it's kind of morphed into a contractor yard, so. Those uses are there, they have the right to exist in perpetuity, um, but, you know, they may not be in the best spot. Going forward, and keep in mind that, like the citywide plan, the industrial zone study, it's a longer-range document, it's not something that you. Even if we enact these changes tonight to the zoning, the, the actual changes on the ground might not, might not take place for a decade or more, so just kind of keep that in mind. Um, and, you know, the kind of the chief goals, really making sure that we come up with a set of regulations which is best for the entire city. Um, and is equitable for everybody going forward. So this is just a little bit of a calendar, and I'm not going to try to read through all this to point out, um, you know, where we've come from, but we're kind of. A little like a, probably a month behind schedule from where that green arrow I thought would be, so we're in September twenty-twenty-two. Kind of looking at the actual passage of the zoning map amendment and the, the zoning regulation amendments, which. Uh, are in line with what's recommended, uh, within the study itself. So ju-just to kind of, uh, you know, refresher again for the commission, there are technically three actions that you'll be considering, whether you vote on them, tonight's another story. But there's an amendment to the citywide plan to incorporate the findings of the industrial zone study into that plan. And then there are the specific amendments to the zoning text and the zoning map. So what did we find out when we did this study, and, and what are some of the recommendations contained within that? Um, right now, the, the, you know, and this is kind of endemic of the zoning regulations as they exist overall. There's a lot of, uh, language in there that's not clear, there are a lot of terms that aren't defined. Um, and you have a lot of uses that are occurring in areas that probably aren't appropriate for. The, the way the city's evolved and the way we'd like to see it evolve going forward. So one of the things we did was we looked at all the definitions for the heavier commercial industrial uses and tried to, you know, fix those. And provide terminology and clarity on those. Uh, kind of probably the chief exercise, which I think will garner the most comment tonight, is. Where should the new zoning boundaries be as it relates to the industrial zones, and I know there'll be, there'll be conversations, and, you know. I'm, I'm sure Norton will come up, I'm sure, you know, um, for South Norwalk for certain will come up. And, and there's reasons for, you know, those differences in those two areas, South Norwalk, you. The areas evolved so much from when, uh, you know, it, the initial industrial legacy. Kind of where it's growing now and where the historic neighborhoods have been, so we're trying to come up. With a path that provides that industrial land that the city needs going forward, but also lessens the burden. And lessens the impacts on those residential neighborhoods that are there, so they can have the highest quality of life possible. And so how do we go about bringing about change on some of those properties? Well. We put incentives into the regulations to allow for, um, some increased height because the consultant team said, look, you, the. The kind of commercial uses that you're targeting, which we feel would work and are appropriate for the area, have different building needs, different parking needs. And some of the uses that we think can help support that, things like allowing upper-story residential to support that ground for commercial use are some of the recommendations within that. Overall, the changes result in, in over seventy percent reduction in the amount of. Uh, industrial zone land, which was the heaviest, uh, industrial classification of I-one. That number has gone up based on, uh, conversations with the Economic and Community Development Committee of Common Council. Which was in response to the city, um, deciding to go forward with the location of the new South Norwalk School at the Hatch and Bailey site. So that resulted in a pretty significant change in the I-one zoning in that area. But we have, at the flip side, we recognize that. There is a problem in some of our residential zones now, where you have a lot of smaller contractors who have. You know, some of them maybe have a couple vehicles, some of them may have half a dozen vehicles, tree trucks, or whatever they do. And they're parking those in residential areas, um, we want to try to get those out of the residential areas as much as possible, and, and it goes beyond an enforcement issue. Which, which is a constant issue. And I recognize that, but we need to provide areas where these vehicles can go, so we, we've tried to loosen up. Where they can go, provided there are certain types of vehicles, so we're trying to be cognizant of not impacting the residential neighborhoods. But also providing outlets for where these vehicles can go. Part and parcel with that is distinct distinguishing between the types of contractor yards and the kind of activities that occur on them, so. There is a big difference between somebody who's got, um, six plumbing, uh, vehicles, and they may store, store some conduit on their site. First, somebody's got a full-on contractor yard with piles of material that they're sorting, causing dust, causing more noise, so we tried to distinguish between, between. Um, those two types of uses. A couple other things that I'll hit on, the, initially the study was encompassing the industrial waterfront. Uh, working with the consultant team, we came to the conclusion early on. That that area was so complex, we wanted to look at that separately, so there is a separate, um. Draft plan that should be out to the public tomorrow or Friday to deal with the, the industrial waterfront. And we anticipate, you know, moving forward on at least the amendment to the P O C D for that later this fall. And the last item we'll probably talk about a lot tonight is also, um, rezoning the Norton property. Uh, the plan recommendation is to make it I-two, I know there's been a lot of concern expressed by the neighbors, um. Brian Baker, who's on the call from, from the P and Z office, can probably, he had an idea that I think might satisfy some of those concerns. We may not be able to enact it as part of this regulations, depending on, um, how far afield it is from the initial recommendation, but it might be a way. For us to handle that property separately without, uh, causing some of the impacts that, that folks are concerned with. So the, the main focus areas of the study, and I'm going to go through each one of those, and, because they're all a little bit different. Um, kind of working north to south, the first area up to the north is the Perry Avenue area. There's a small area that's not circle, but there are some legacy industrial parcels in the Wall Street area that are slated for rezoning. Uh, area I was just talking about, East Norwalk, which contains this large, uh. Property of the Norton Parcel, and then, uh, industrial one-zone property, which basically parallels the, the railroad tracks in East Norwalk. And probably the largest area, which is more complex because it's diverse in terms of the types of zoning. Uh, the industrial zoning present is the South Norwalk area, which has, you know, the Meadow Street, Wilson Ave area. Wrapping around MLK and then over to Bowton Street, so that's a really complex level, uh, area, and we'll look at that one, um, kind of separately, uh, parcel. You've got, you know, parcel area by parcel there. Zooming in a little bit, this is the, uh, Perry Ave, New Canaan Ave area. The map on the left is the existing zoning, so you can see this kind of, um. I don't know if it's peach color or salmon color, but that's all currently zoned business too, which has a myriad of commercial uses that are allowed, including some industrial or manufacturing uses. Um, and looking at these areas more closely, um, the consultant team and staff was in agreement early on that this area is probably better suited. For a little more intense industrial use, given its location, and given the uses that are there, so the proposal is to rezone that. From business two to I-two. And we think that, you know, it's, it's more appropriate, it does allow for residential, which B-two does allow as well now. But we think the principal and underlying use, uh. Which is probably better for the long-term health of the city is going to this industrial two classification. I mentioned, uh, the Wall Street area, uh, very briefly, these purple parcels here, there are some off of Cross Street and some off of High and Knight. Those are legacy, uh, industrial properties, some of those don't contain industrial uses. Uh, the, the recommendation is to rezone that whole area to consolidate it into the Central Business District, which was rezoned, I believe, in twenty-nineteen. To make for just more unified zoning, I think that's just more appropriate and more of a cleanup action. To make for just more unified zoning. I think that's just more appropriate and more of a cleanup action. Working kind of to the east and southeast, we're into East Norwalk. This is the existing zoning again on the left. This light purple is existing. Over here, the Norton site that is currently restricted industrial. This area, which is kind of the spine through East Norwalk is East Avenue. This area is neighborhood, was neighborhood business zone and has since been rezoned to the E V T Z, which the process we went through last year. And remaining East Norwalk is that east west spine I spoke about, which parallels the railroad tracks. That is currently zone industrial one. The proposal is to rezone this area industrial two, which also is a manufacturing zone. But is a little bit lighter intensity. Along the waterfront, as I mentioned, we're not touching that for now. That's indicated in the gray over here. The recommendation is to look at that and act on that in unison with the industrial waterfront plan. And so you can see the parcels on the right that are proposed to go into the I two, which is sort of a purplish color. And the gray over here again is the waterfront parcels, which we'll tackle separately. Moving into South Norwalk, this is probably the largest area under consideration and. It's, it's just kind of varied from which area you're talking about when you get, and I'm going to go through these and. In zoomed in detail, just because they're pretty complex because. Off of Lexington Avenue, Cassouth and Olean, they're all, they all have their own separate issues. Bowton Street's unique in terms of why it's getting looked at differently. M L K is also different because of the road network and the, you know, the differentiation between where the residential parcels lie. Down off of South Main into Meadow, Wilson and Woodward. You also have a completely different makeup and there's different impacts on all these uses and. Complexity in terms of their relationship to their neighbors. So the, the recommended rezoning was initially this map on the right. There was obviously when the city bought the Hatch and Bailey parcel over here. That severely impacted what we were thinking in terms of the industrial reclassification. And I'm going to go into those a little more detail area by area. So the first area that we'll touch on is getting into kind of where. Chestnut Street comes down, merges with South Main. And you have, you know, Merritt Street and then there's a lot of complex properties there and complex legacy uses. Which, and some of them are appropriate for the area and some of them are, you know, just thinking about how that area has evolved and. How it's continuing to evolve are probably just not appropriate going forward. It, it, it's really important to reiterate this and I may restate it twenty times tonight. So please indulge me. Any use that's there now, no matter what we rezoned it to, whether we rezoned it to residential, to a lighter commercial use, whatever. That use can continue in perpetuity regardless of. Change in ownership, change in name, that use can continue. We're not going. Through any eminent domain process or anything like that. So if you have a use, it gets rezoned, it will be grandfathered in. It's important to state that. We'll probably get more in-depth conversation on that as it relates to the contractor yards, because I think that's. A case where I, in my opinion, there is zero impact as a result of the zone change, making them non-conforming. But looking more specifically at the properties here, you can see fifty seven Chestnut, which has one of my favorites. Businesses in it, which is Space Cap Brewing. So that is proposed to go from I one to I two. Whereas the properties on the other side of the street. Chestnut, which can train, had a couple legacy contractor yards. There's a transfer station. Those are proposed to line up with the N B zone, which is more consistent with what you see on the parcels. So right now the zoning, I can show you a little better on the map on the left. Here's Chestnut Street through here. These parcels all through here are I one zone, whereas the properties on the east side are N B. So we've taken that N B parcel. On the east side and wrapped it along the whole block. So now there's kind of a unified zoning package on that side. And then we've cleaned up some of these legacy I one parcels and brought them into the lighter I two mix. Any questions on that before I drop to the next map? We can always go back. So I'll just jump forward then. Just a little bit to the west of that, we were kind of looking at this a little bit on the other map. The existing zoning on Lexington Avenue was for the most part in neighborhood business, pretty much this whole stretch. But if you travel out to Lexington Avenue, it's pretty much all residential through this bulk of this stretch through here. So what we did was. We lined up the zoning on Lexington Avenue with how the uses layout now. We've removed the industrial one uses up along where Ely Avenue comes in. That's a great little neighborhood, which I think is just going to flourish going forward. But we've removed these I one uses and brought them into the neighborhood business mix. And continued that neighborhood business mix south, just to the first parcel below. Ole, Olean Street on the southeast corner. And then the rest of it you can see is this salmon color. And that is all C residential, which lines up with the zoning on the rest of the street. So I think we've really cleaned up what's. Going, actually going on there and really protected that area. Some of you may recall. Part of the two thousand sixteen initial T O D plan for South Norwalk. They had some recommendations on preservation methods, methods there because there's a lot of de facto, excuse me, a lot of de facto. Affordable housing in that area. So the idea here is that this C resident zoning should help protect that going forward. A little further south and a little further east, this is looking at really what's going on with. The I one heavier industrial properties as we get into South Main and Meadow. And as you can see in the circle on the right, that is the, the site of the proposed school. All this property up through here and including when you get up into. Kind of where we have San Vincenzo and other things is I one. And obviously the San, San Vincenzo proper. Place properties doesn't make any sense to be I one anyway. So we probably would have rezoned that regardless of whether the school was going there. So what happened was when we did the referral out to common council to amend the citywide plan. That's kind of when the conversation about the school really came to public light. And we went back and forth with the E C D Committee of Council for probably about a three month period. And the recommendation came down from council that they would like this area. Where the school site is as well as just to the north and where the. Properties are along Meadow Street where you have Lejoy's, you have the transfer station, et cetera, that those should be downzoned to the I two zoning. Again, I know this is going to come up later. Important to state. Those uses can remain in perpetuity. There's no plan that I'm aware of to do anything different than that. So. Those uses can remain and function just as they're functioning today. Again, here's like just a kind of a zoom close up of the site where the properties, where the school site is. Recommended to go into residential zoning, consistent with what we see to the north. And then the parcels just to the south and the east are proposed to go to the I two, whereas they're currently I one. So this is kind of a, like a big picture map of South Norwalk.
Yeah, I have a question in regards to the previous slide. So the residential area that's right next to the, this big circle of the proposed school. And then you have this extenuating brown section. Can, can you just give me that designation one more time? What, what does that indicate?
Your, my color right where I'm pointing now, that color might be off a little bit. But this lighter, I'm going to call it salmon color. That's, that's C residential. That's over here. And I believe that allows one and two family, whereas the D, which is the brown. And that's what going on is just over in this area. And I could probably zoom back a map, but you can also see on this map here, the D is a multi-family zone. That's the existing zoning through this.
Okay, all right. I, I understand now. And, and the, and the, and the businesses within that particular area. Have been grandfathered in as far as any zoning changes.
Yeah. So they're even up through here where you already have, and through here, there are commercial uses in these areas already. I'm not sure when they were rezoned, but they've been grandfathered in and operating. As they wanted to operate, you know, for a very long time. So any other business, I know there's a couple of small contractor yards through here. If those get rezoned, as long as they, you know, the use continues, they can continue to operate as a contractor yard. There's nothing that unless they get bought and this, and move to something else, but they, they can continue to operate in perpetuity.
I have a question. Sure. Mike here. Steve, can you explain what the level of improvement someone can do on a grandfather business? In terms of the, you know, on the existing structures, at what point does it, does it? At what point would the city say you can't intensify that use?
Right. So that we'll look at it from a couple of different uses because it's probably easier to explain it that way. So if you had a. Let's just say you, you had some business here. I don't even, I don't remember what. Business actually operates here, but you had a business that became non-conforming and you had a building that occupied the, the bulk of that site. You wouldn't necessarily be allowed to expand that building. So if it was a used that became non-conforming. You couldn't expand that business on that site. If you change it to a conforming use, then you could expand and be consistent with whatever the regulations you have. For a contractor yard, so say there was no real, maybe there's a one building to facilitate the operation of the business on the site, but the bulk of the property. Is storing materials or it's got trucks parked. However, you lay that out in time is how you can operate in the future. We did, and I put it in my memo, we have put a, the possibility of a clause into the regulations to address that. Where if there is an existing contractor yard and he gets, that contractor yard gets rezoned. They could move the operations around within the property. So we wouldn't necessarily worry about if they had piles on the north side of the property, on the south side of the property. So long as they, if they moved that. Operation closer to a residential zone, then we would require them to beef up and increase the buffer above what was existing. Within the regulations. We'd also allow them to put up buildings to facilitate the operation of the business. So in my opinion, allowing them to do that under that clause does not impact. That, that contractor yard property and provides a lot of flexibility for them. Again, if they change uses in the future, that, you know, they, they, they'd have to conform to the present regulations.
Is that, is that, just to be clear, is that a rezone? To any zone or is it only from I one to I two? Or, you know, that clause, would that, would that address properties in, let's say a D zone or a C zone?
So the, any, well, the contractor yards are only presently allowed in the I one zone. So it really would only be applicable to them. So. Any other contractor yard that's operating in a D zone would be non-conforming, I guess. Maybe I didn't answer your question correctly, but I guess you could, if you had a contractor yard in the D zone. You could consider applying it to that contractor yard too as well. And if, if that's what you're asking.
And yes, and would, would you be able to put a new roof on or, you know, at what point? How much can you renovate the existing buildings? Because a lot of them are historic or what, I wouldn't even use that word, but just. Let's say if they're run down and someone wants to maintain their business and, and improve the building. Where is the cutoff to how much they can improve the building?
And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's, you know, if they took out a permit to completely. Put up a new building, then I think they probably run afoul of the grandfathering clause, but I think the language. And I can always pull that up after the presentation, which, which may actually cover that. Which was allows them to put up some buildings, but we can go through that in a little more detail.
It's important. There's a lot of concern, you know, in that regard. So I wanted to ask, ask you right now.
And I have a piggyback question to Mike's inquiries. So in the event, the sad event of Mother Nature destroying the building by way of fire, flood or storm. Should that, could that contract rebuild that building to the. Previous condition or improve it to meet the guidelines of, you know, building construction?
Yeah, Brian, jump in. Right, yeah, there, there is a whole section on, on non-conforming structures existing within the regulations that allows. The parameters for a rebuild under, you know, if there's a flood or active god or riot or however they term it. And then, then there's the clause we're talking about now, which gives flexibility to the existing contractor yards. And maybe when I'm done, I'll, I'll pull that. Particular section up and we can look at that in a little more detail too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And, and the last thing to point out in here is kind of, there's two maps here. The one on the left. Shows the proposed industrial zoning in South Norwalk, where the map on the right is the existing. Just to highlight a couple of things for areas we really didn't talk about. The west side or the left side of the map is M L K Boulevard, which kind of runs north, south through here, excuse me, through here. And then we have Bowton Street, which has some larger contractor yards on that piece. That is all presently zoned I one, which you can see through here. Important to point out, the consultant team, when they did their initial tour of the area, they flagged Bowton Street. Right off, they were very concerned with the narrowness of the road and felt it was appropriate over the long term. That that transition to something with a less intensive use in terms of that kind of truck traffic it was seeing now. So the recommendation within the plan is to zone that from I one to I two. And it's important to restate again, those contractor yards can continue to operate just as they are today with no impact on their businesses whatsoever. The area proposed to actually change from restricted industrial to I one. Is off of Rockland Road and the reason being is there's really no impact to anybody down there. There's not, nobody that's spudding up to. That it's going to negatively impact. So it's kind of an isolated pocket where it can operate and function pretty well. So this is kind of what we were just talking about with I one, I two and R I. So. I know you've all had a chance to look at this, but the column on the left is the existing I one uses. There are two. Classifications. First one is site plan uses and for the public site plan use kind of in a nutshell is. Where there's an application that meets a certain use or size threshold. In which zoning regulations deem that it needs commission approval. However, the commission does not have a lot of discretion in approving an application for site plan, provided it meets all the standards in the regulations. The second lower column piece are special permit uses and special permit uses. Have a higher level and higher threshold of approval with additional standards, some of which are discretionary. On the commission's opinion on whether they meet those standards or not. Those automatically trigger a public hearing. So you can see what we did. The uses on the left. Are the site plan and special permit uses for I one, where this column over here contains the site plan uses. For I one and below the special permit uses for I one. So what we tried to do for the most part in a nutshell was remove the, the uses which A. Detract from the, the I one use that we want to see there, which is the heavier industrial use. Move uses around in terms of impact. So like distribution facilities, you bump that down because that's got a lot of heavy truck traffics. We want to make sure. That bumps into the special permit category contractor yards. Get moved and renamed to earth processing and contractor yards. So that's moves down from site plan to special permit. We removed allowing one and two family dwellings because that's just not. An appropriate use for the industrial zone. We have a lot of land we can zone for residential, but we don't have a lot of land. For that heavy manufacturing and then the heavier uses we need. We removed oil and petroleum storage, for example, from site plan to special permit. And as I mentioned, distribution jumps down to a special permit use. The other use which, and zone I should say, just going away is restricted industrial. And that's being replaced with I two. You can see that there are a lot more uses allowed. In I two than allowed in R I. But the intent of these two zones is really to allow for commercial uses of varying intensity. You'll probably hear later and have read, well, you're taking away a lot of my uses from the I one zone. Because there's some bad zoning language in there where pulls in uses from a residential zone. That's just bad zoning. Um, that's just bad zoning. Um, that's kind of been pointed out in the P U C D. It's not good land use practice to do that. Um, so I mean, that's kind of one of the reasons we went in the direction we went in. Um, it's important to point out, um, we do loosen up, um, like the RI doesn't allow residential now. Um, but it does in the northern site for very specific purposes, and it's not allowed in the I one zone. Um, however, outside of the one and two family. However, we have included that in the I two zone, which is the, the majority of the industrial uses as an accessory supplementary use to help monetize those properties. Um, there, as, as we get a lot of complaints that we're allowing residential here, there and everywhere, we're targeting where that residential should go. We, we understand we want to attract and add residential in certain areas, uh, which we've gone over in other hearings already, you know, specifically around our TOD sites. And we're targeting that, uh, the residential where it should go and not in within these industrial zones. Um, getting into the bulk of height standards, the, this, um, red on the bottom shows you the I one and I two, where up above is the existing I one, uh, very small piece of light industrial two and restricted industrial. To point out some things on here. The allowed height bumps up in both zones. And there's a reason for that, uh, based on the consult, consultants' experience in other areas that the manufacturing, uh, uses that you're seeing today require a taller ground floor. So that's why we've allowed additional height. Um, we've, uh, you know, been cognizant of what happens if these are near residential zones. So we've required that if you're going to be building close up in residential areas, you have to bump those buildings back when you start elevating the heights, which isn't the case now. So there might actually be some relief, whereas that doesn't, uh, it isn't the case now. And again, when we look at where they're located, we're very cognizant of when they're near industrial, uh, excuse me, when the industrial users are near residential zones, we want those properties pulled back. Um, and as I mentioned, the, our I two zone will now allow, um, residential dwelling units, um, to help supplement what's going on with the residential. Excuse me, with the commercial. Um, to hit on this again, important to point out, um, that, so right now there, under the current zoning, there's over 500 acres zoned, um, industrial, which includes the I one, RI and that little bit of I two. There's been an overall 70% reduction in the amount of the heavy I one zone. Um, but we have bumped up by about 45% where you can park commercial vehicles to provide some relief and outlet for those, uh, users. We've, um, taken, uh, 41 acres that were business two, uh, up and off that main avenue corridor we talked about at the beginning and bumped that into the I two category. South Norwalk specifically, we've taken out, um, over 160 acres, um, of the I one zoning with an overall reduction of 70 acres of industrial zone land. Um, and it just, and the reason for that is a lot of that just was zoning correctly or was legacy zoning, which in our opinion, um, and the consultant's opinion isn't appropriate and not appropriate, uh, for the best interest of the city, uh, going forward. Um, there's been about 20 contractor yards and the number might have bumped up a little bit. I'd have to double check, um, my math based on the rezoning around Meadow Street. Um, where those are going to be about 20 contractor yards that are going to become legally non-conforming, uh, um, as a result of this and to, to beat the proverbial dead horse. Those contractor yards can operate in perpetuity going forward, regardless of what zone we, um, changed them to. Um, and the last thing I'll touch on after I'm done with my slides is I'll pull up that language we mentioned about, um, the flexibility we're thinking of for the contractor yards. But as a trade-off, um, to realize the kind of things we want to see on these properties, we bumped up the height um, in number of stories and reduced the parking and tried to provide incentives and complimentary uses to help monetize those properties. Um, we've also loosened the restrictions on, uh, what size projects have to come to the commission for a site plan approval going from 20,000 to, um, 50,000 square feet. Um, and I am getting close to the edge, going a little longer than I hoped. Um, just for example, here are a couple of properties on Meadow Street that look at the existing uses. Um, in terms of what's on the site now, uh, how they're being operated. Uh, basically we can figure in terms of the type of employment things we're seeing and, um, how can that be developed in the future to see something that A is less impactful on the neighborhood, adds to the tax base and also adds to job growth. So the consultant team went through some analysis where they, you know, just ran models. Um, you know, with the basic block diagrams, looking at, um, comparable commercial uses, what could be built there, what they would require in terms of site development for parking and what they might yield in terms of job growth. And, and this is all in the appendices of the report, but the sum is that, you know, a lot of these properties in terms of their land use, while many of them do serve a, a necessary function to the city, are, are probably not performing up, um, up to their best and highest use as, as we would see that in a land use perspective. Um, I'm happy to take questions. Um, but I will pull up that, um, language we were talking about so we can kind of go through that in a little more detail and see, um, you know, what, what those impacts are.
Steve, this is Nick. I had one question.
Sure.
On main, uh, changing main avenue, Main Street to, from B two to I two, how does that impact like restaurants along there? Does that mean new restaurants can't go in, but current locations that are restaurants can stay restaurants and sell to other people who want to have a restaurant there?
Let me, um, shoot, hold on a sec.
No worries.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that map back up just because the areas that we're proposing to rezone. I want to make sure you're not thinking it's the whole corridor because it's not.
Okay. Yeah. I was looking at one of the maps and I was, I might be confused.
Yeah, let me, here it is right here. Can you see that?
Mm-hmm.
So the map on the left again, existing zoning, this salmon color is all industrial two. Um, the area, the map on the right shows the rezoning. So this over here is going to remain business two. So this is where all those restaurants are through the main avenue corridor. The properties proposed for rezoning are this sort of purple color. And these are, I don't think there's any restaurants in there or any retail.
I'm sorry. I was getting confused because I was looking at, if you, looking at the key here, which says mixed, mixed use light. That's not I two. That's okay. Sorry. That's staying the same then. My bad. Thank you.
No problem. It's probably good because somebody else might've been thinking the same thing. Um, but I'll pull up that language now and you can take a look at it and we can decide, um, if that was something you were thinking about or not, is, let me blow that up just a little. Okay. So that's the language. Um, and I'll give everybody a second to read through it. I know the public perhaps haven't seen it yet, so everybody can take a, take a moment to read through that. And I should say, this was, you know, initially, um, attorney such you had represent, represented some clients had sent me some language. I, I retweeted, I don't think she's in agreement with all our changes, but we did start there. And so I want to make sure now that it was not all my original language.
So, um, Steve, I have another question, just in regards to, um, like the future. Um, if, what was the purpose of redesignating I one to I two or I two to I one? If you're going to allow those businesses to operate the way that they are in perpetuity, like without any kind of safeguards or guardrails?
Well, I, I think there are some safeguards and guardrails that are going to be built in with the additional buffering. Um, the, 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 you know, it's important to point out that we don't, our goal is not to eliminate contractor yards entirely. Um, you know, there, they do provide, uh, you know, a necessary function and, and they do employ Norwalk residents. So we're not, um, blind to those facts. Our hope and goal would be in certain areas that those uses transition, transition to better uses. Uses that A are more fitting and appropriate for the area. Um, and provide a better economic benefit to the city. So that's why we hope that the incentives that we put in, in terms of the increased allowed height, uh, reduced parking, um, and those things will spawn somebody to think differently over time on how they should best use those properties. I, I'm not sure if that addresses everything, but that, that.
Um, um, it, it does. It answers the larger question. Um, I'm just thinking about just, you know, feedback in the future in regards to, you know, while you made these changes and how is it going to impact negatively or positively, you know, in these, um, in, in these neighborhoods that we talked about. And if there's not going to be any change, then what was the purpose of doing all that? That's just, I'm, I'm, I'm preparing for the, the, um, the questions.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fair. And I, I think one thing to keep in mind, and this is the case with, um, um, any land use that you talk about. I, i- if it is, if it's a use that somebody doesn't want to see on a particular property. There's generally, especially you're in a place where you have high demand real estate like Norwalk. There's a reason why those businesses and properties function the way they prop, they function. For the most part, there's always outliers, but there's generally because there's not the land use, uh, rules in place that allow them to do something better or something more appropriate with their properties. We just see that a lot when you rezone properties like, and people may not like this answer, but when you up some properties to allow more density, you see the change in those properties. Somebody says, well, wait a minute, I can do this on my property. So one of the, it, it, it's a carrot in a stick approach. You give the carrot of, all right, we're going to give you, we're going to allow you to do some residential in the upper stories of these buildings. We're going to reduce your parking and give you more building height. But in exchange, we want you to improve your properties in an X, Y, Z manner. So that, that's the kind of balance and trade-off we seek anytime we amend these regulations.
Um, that, that's an excellent explanation. Thank you so much.
You want me to pull that down? Uh, are we? Questions on that? Or we got a chance to read through it? I can always pull it back up later on as well. Trying to be cognizant of the time because I took a little while. Taking the chairman's line hearing done, I'm going to move on to the.
Okay. Uh, is that it, Steve?
Um, yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any, any questions from the, uh, uh, commission before we open it up to the public? All right. I see a lot of people saying no. Uh, Brian, you want to explain, uh, uh, how people can, um, raise their hand so that they can be recognized?
Sure. So for members of the public, if you'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in on a phone, uh, you'd hit star nine and that would raise your hand. Uh, make sure you just click in the raise your hand tool once, uh, so one click. Um, and then just a reminder to, uh, say your name and address for us. With that, it started.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name's, uh, Lou DiCanto. Uh, I'm the owner of 149 South Main Street, been the owner since 2013, about nine years. Uh, my property is currently zoned, has a split zoning designation, half industrial, one, half neighborhood business. I understand that there needs to be changes made and gradual changes that are better for the city. I understand. Uh, my, my zoning for my property is going to be changed completely without removal of the, uh, industrial one portion and go straight to neighborhood business, which really changes the use of my property considerably. I mean, I, I understand how to go down to residential to, or industrial two. I could understand that. Uh, I also don't understand why. I, I happened to find out, uh, about this on Facebook five days ago. No one sent a formal letter to me telling me that the zoning of my proposal is going to be changed. Um, I, you know, I pay my taxes. They know how to get ahold of me. I've gotten no notifications on my property. Um, you know, um, it just seems like, you know, the, the area between Bell Avenue, Chestnut, Merritt Street and South Main Street was largely industrial one and less neighborhood business. I also can't understand why you wouldn't just make that all industrial one property versus change it all to neighborhood business. Well, I, in my opinion, it greatly impacts my property. Um, you know, the, I understand you're trying to create some other places for small contractors to maybe to keep a legal business put aside. I am a small contractor and I don't run a contractor's yard. Uh, but, uh, you know, you're taking away, neighborhood business does not allow for contractors, uh, storage in, in those locations either. So you're creating more neighborhood business location, less places for those contractors to store. Um, I'm sorry, I'm reading a few notes. I mean, the study that was done, did it actually give an impact on, on the property owner's values of what their properties are, are, are worth? Uh, it, it just raises a lot of questions and I don't understand. Uh, I had just getting my hands around this for the last three days, four days that I've tried to figure out, you know, what's going on. Um, I'm pretty much just a little, a little mystified on how this is all going to work. Uh, that's about it. That's what I have to say right now, and hopefully you take that under consideration. Maybe it gives a little time to digest how this, these changes will work for us. Instead of impacting us so hard that we just will, will change our usage.
Thank you.
All right, Lou, cut you off. Um, all right, next we have, uh, Mr. Flaherty.
Uh, hi, Brian. I'm kind of doing a, um, co-presentation with attorney Suchi. So.
All right, let me, yeah, let me, uh, yeah, make it both, give me one second. Okay. You should be able to speak, share screen, whatever you have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, good evening, everyone. For the record, as you know, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner with Parma de Torrent Sandec and Hennessy in Stamford, Connecticut. And I'm appearing before you tonight on behalf of both Brian Turzian and Joe Seaman and others. And along with Craig Flaherty, a civil engineer and principal of Redness and Mead, to strenuously object to the sweeping zone changes and text amendments under consideration by you for properties in the industrial number one and restricted industrial zones. I want to thank Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, as well as the staff for the opportunity to share, to have shared our concerns prior to tonight and this evening of many of my industrial clients, as you consider these broad and impactful changes which follow two years of moratoria and are in response to the industrial zones report released last year. First, a few comments on the notice that Mr. DiCanto alluded to, which are important for you to, for me to share and consider. I submit to you that the notice published in the hour this month is deficient as its content fails to fairly and sufficiently apprise those who may be affected by the nature and character of the actions proposed tonight as required by law, thus depriving them of the opportunity to properly and intelligently prepare and participate tonight. The notice does not identify any of the streets where the properties are be rezoned, are located. It does not identify the properties to be rezoned or provide any greater identifying information about those properties to fairly apprise affected landowners about the proposed changes. Nor does it contain all of the proposed new classifications of these properties, which we heard tonight also include reclassification of properties to neighborhood business. That's not in the notice that was published. I submit that a legal notice, uh, Craig, would you mind screen sharing if you could? Uh, the official required legal notice that was published measures approximately three inches by three inches and was placed at the bottom of the page is insufficient. Especially, this, this is especially true when you compare it to the tax collector's notice that appeared on the same page that day, which takes up half the page and identifies 87 specific taxpayers by name, address, amount due and year. It would serve this commission well to continue this hearing to another date so that another notice with greater specificity and content can be published and avoid a claim of insufficient notice. With such an important decision, here, this is what I was referring to. The P and Z notice is at the bottom of the page, but half of the page on the right shows all of the, uh, individual property owners, their addresses and the information about their tax status. Um, as I indicated, I would suggest that a list of all properties to the effect, that are affected be posted in City Hall, just like those for tax sales, which contain the address, current zoning classification and proposed classification. just like those for tax sales, which contain the address, current zoning classification, and proposed classification. So property owners like my client, Mr. DiCanto and others, could easily gain access to the information. It's been rather difficult to determine zone changes. For one client in particular, I reviewed the maps and came up with one classification. Mr. Flaherty on my request, my request did the same and came up with a different one. And through discussions with staff, a third classification was shared today. I I question what the rush is to a decision tonight or within the next few weeks. These changes have been under consideration for nearly two years, so why not spend a little more time sharing the impacts of the changes with property owners at a neighborhood meeting or something similar? Having said that, as many of you recall from the comments I raised in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one on behalf of Turzian Trucking, J L Seaman and others, and with respect to the moratorium. The proposed zone changes of more than a hundred fifty properties, totally, totally more than a hundred and seventy-five acres, is significant and far reaching for my clients, some of whom have been part of the fabric of Norwalk for more than forty years. And if adopted either by zone change or text amendment, will impair and threaten their viability for decades to come. As explained in my May eighteen twenty twenty-two letter, which I hope all of you have read and considered. Brian Turzian and his companies own six properties on Bownton Street, fifty, fifty-sixth, fifty-eight, sixty-two, and seventy, and also number fifteen Woodward Avenue. He is owned and operated with proper permits or has established legally non-conforming uses, reputable and valuable contractor's yards for more than forty years, employing fifteen year-round workers. He supplies topsoil, mulch, sand, gravel, cement, flagstone, and other materials to homeowners, builders, construction companies, the city of Norwalk, other municipalities in the state of Connecticut. He has provided materials for the East Avenue and Walk Bridge Projects, Brian McBann Softball Field, West Rocks Middle School Soccer Field, Woodward Avenue Park, Yukon Stamford, South Norwalk Electric and Water, Connecticut DOT, and other projects in Norwalk, Fairfield County and the state. As a locally based business, he helps keep prices low by providing Norwalk sourced materials and construction project assistance to local businesses and others who otherwise would likely have to travel twenty-five to fifty miles from this this area to purchase materials and services. He also accepts broken asphalt, concrete, bricks, fill, wood chips, and other materials, some of which are processed onsite into recyclable, usable materials. Mr. Turzian is an essential business that helps drive the local economy by supplying materials to hundreds of contractors and residents. Between real and personal property taxes, Mr. Turzian pays nearly a hundred thousand dollars annually to the city of Norwalk for his Bownton Street and Woodward Avenue properties and various pieces of equipment. In the forty years in business, he has received only a handful of complaints which were immediately addressed. The sweeping, sweeping and draconian zone changes and text amendments proposed today once again imperil Mr. Turzian's future and will forever impact this longstanding and valuable Norwalk business. Without modification to the regulations, more and more importantly, would be the end, excuse me, without modification to the regulations as suggested. And um, the end result would be the reclassification of his properties from industrial one to industrial two, which will render them non-conforming. This will effectively eliminate expansion plans or possibilities, expansion plans or possibilities, and create future difficulties and issues with any new products, services, or technologies he may consider, as they may be deemed impermissible expansions of a non-conforming use. In essence, you're telling him that he can't grow. The commission has already impeded his success by enacting the moratorium in twenty twenty, which was extended through this year. The city's Plan of Conservation Develop and Development, the advisory guiding document for future planning, recognizes that Norwalk quote's prosperity is rooted in retaining the foundation of its diversified economy, end quote, page ten, and that varied businesses quote, allow many Norwalk residents to work where they live, providing living wage jobs for all skill levels and create a strong non-residence tax base, end quote, page ten. The P O C D, as it is called, envisions Norwalk as a city that is quote, business friendly while protecting the quality of life, end quote, of its citizens, and suggests that industrial land should be reserved, page nineteen, that protection should be afforded to the remains of industrially zoned properties, page fifty, and that the city should quote, encourage pockets of industrial users, page fifty, so as to ensure a healthy and vibrant city. The P O C D does not identify industrial uses as weaknesses, but rather as necessities. The proposed zone changes and text amendments thwart all of these planning goals and make the city business unfriendly. If the goal is of the proposed changes and text amendments is to eliminate or severely curtail contractor's yards and see these uses cease to exist, I submit to you that this goal will not be realized next week, next month, next year, or even in the next decade, as Mr. Kleppen aptly noted in his opening remarks. Just as the city's building zone regulations seek to eliminate non-conforming uses, those very non-conforming uses are constitutionally protected vested property rights, which will continue for decades after you take action on the proposed map change, changes and text amendments. Map changes or text amendments will not result in these bu- these businesses ceasing to operate. As Ms. Byron noted and questioned, and quite the contrary, they will continue to do so for many years. The only way to remove uses that you do not like or that you deem inappropriate would be for the city to exercise its power of condemnation and seize these properties. But that is not something that anyone is suggesting. So the question is, can industrial uses such as contractor's yards coexist with residential and other neighbors? And can that be achieved in another way that does not impair the viability or classification of properly permitted contractor's yard operators? The answer to both questions is yes, and it lies in enforcement. I've shared this concept with the commission for years, but it does not seem to resonate. I expressed the need for better enforcement in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and the industrial zones report even pointed out that the city has weak and inconsistent enforcement, and that's problematic, page two thirty-one. As I've suggested time and time again, consistent, concerted, swift, and substantial enforcement of violations and violators by planning and zoning, fire, police, public works, and other departments would resolve many of the underlying issues between the neighborhoods and the contractors that operate near them. The issues emerging from contractor's yards are typically not from established, properly permitted operators and owners. My client, client, as I mentioned before, has had few notices of violations in the past, and with any of them has immediately moved to resolve them. The problems are created by the operator who refuses to abide by his permit, refuses to abide by the conditions of approval or operators that do not have permits at all. And with these, the city has many weapons in its arsenal of enforcement that if swiftly, strenuously, and consistently applied, would go a long way toward resolving the conflicts. The city can issue notices of violation, cease and desist orders, it can impose fines, it can seek conjunctive relief, it can commence other civil actions, and it can even revoke permits after proper hearing. But the city appears to made the decide, the public policy determination that enforcement is not a priority. If it was, and if swift and severe enforcement was applied, this would not only address the problematic operators, but would send a clear and strong message to others that violations would not be tolerated. My client's properties on Bownton and Woodward Avenue are well maintained. In some ways, in better condition than neighboring residential and commercial properties. I therefore urge you to consider reconsider the draconian measures suggested, zone change and text amendment, and modify this proposal to exclude Mr. Turzian properties from the list of parcels to be rezoned from industrial number one to industrial number two, and leave his classification at industrial number one, just as is suggested for Rockland Road, which has residential, commercial, and religious uses on that street. This way, my client would not be forever classified as non-conforming and not have to endure all of the issues and problems with that that come attendant to that classification. If the commission is not so inclined to do so, I would urge you to consider the proposed text that was presented by us in its entirety in May or the text that Mr. Kleppen described to you tonight. But one thing that I think is important to re-add into that text is that should there be approved contractor operators who have adjoining lands that they have acquired over time with the hope that they could expand their use and seek the appropriate permits at a time in the future when they are able to do so, that they be allowed to expand their uses into adjoining properties that they own or control. Uh, that is all I have to to say to you this evening on behalf of Mr. Turzian. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Craig Flaherty, who has some additional technical and other observations to share with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm the president of Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in uh Stamford and Wilton. Um, I have the same client as uh Ms. Suchi, uh Mr. Brian Turzian of Turzian Trucking Co., um and she's already uh enumerated the properties that he owns on Bownton Street and uh, whether you call it South Main Street or Woodward Avenue, uh depending on the tax card. For, you know, he, uh, Mr. Turzian asked me to help uh him understand the impact of uh the proposed regulation change on his properties. Um, those properties are properties that are uh proposed to be remapped um out of industrial one and into industrial two. And of course, you have the uh co-regulation amendment that defines the uses that would be allowed in that future industrial two zone. Um, in order to help me understand that, uh, I uh created a series of charts that kind of line by line uh went through the uses that are allowed today in the industrial number one zone um so that I could compare those to the uses that would be allowed in the industrial number two zone. Um, I think these charts uh which were appended to my September nineteenth uh two thousand twenty-two letter um are probably very helpful for you as you consider these changes, whether these change, whether it's related to Mr. Turzian or other property owners. Um, I was informed uh via email by staff that the total number of properties um being rezoned out of industrial zone number one and into industrial zone number two is a hundred and seventy-five properties uh covering roughly a hundred and fifty acres uh of the city. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen um and go through the charts. Um, I did submit full-size versions of these and and hard copies, so if you um want to see those as you're considering this decision, I'm sure staff can get you a hard copy version. Um, the charts are actually eleven by seventeen, uh so if you don't have, happen to have an eleven by seventeen printer at home, you might find the hard copy uh helpful. So to explain uh this first chart, which is entitled Exhibit A, uh you've got three columns, uh that listing of principal and special permits uh is the first column. Uh, and um if you see an S P uh listed, that means it's a special permit versus a principal use. Um, the second column is what is currently allowed in the existing industrial number one zone. And then the third column is uh an indication of whether it is allowed in the industrial number two zone. So green means yes, allowed, uh whether existing or proposed. Uh, red means, of course, not allowed. Uh, then you will see a third color in yellow. Um, I highlighted those cells um because they didn't apply uh specifically to Mr. Turzian's property. So they're kind of not applicable in terms of uh my representation of him. Uh, so uh heavy manufacturing goes from allowed to not allowed. A light manufacturing go is continues to be allowed. Uh warehouses uh will be allowed and large warehouses have to go through special permit process. Uh, storage facilities like self-storage uh will not be allowed. This was kind of an odd one for me. I I know that um, you know, self-storage is not a uh uh a use that you might want in a city center because it doesn't provide much uh uh life for a city center zone. But uh as far as a use that is low traffic, low noise, low impact, high tax dollars without affecting the Board of Education budget, it seems like a use that makes sense for some of these outlying uh industrial areas. Uh wholesale distribution facilities allowed now will not be allowed in industrial number two. Transportation and bus terminals allowed now will not be allowed in industrial two. Um, a new definition of transportation maintenance terminals is added. So it doesn't exist today in the industrial number one zone, but it would be added to the industrial two. Uh, public utility supply and storage uh is allowed today, will not be allowed tomorrow. That again was an odd one. That's one that uh is allowed in your residential zones. Uh, you might have a water tower, you might have a electrical substation. These things have to be located where it makes sense for the distribution facility. Um, but that would not be allowed in industrial two zone. Uh, material steriles and storage yard are allowed today. All those temporary moratorium will be allowed tomorrow. Uh, obviously, this is the big point of discussion tonight. Uh, this is a new definition uh that clearly directly applies to Mr. Turzian, earth processing and contractor's material storage yard. Current moratorium will not be allowed in the industrial number two zone. I'll get to um industrial number one zone a little bit. Um, offices would be allowed on upper floors, not on the ground floor. Uh, banks not allowed, marine zone didn't apply. Retail stores not allowed, personal and business service establishments not allowed. Restaurant and taverns not allowed, printing stamp establishments will be continued. Uh sewage treatment facilities, again, not really too applicable, uh would not be allowed. R and D facilities would be. Um, I'll talk about this one in a little more detail too, as uh Director Kleppen referenced it. Um, currently in the industrial number one zone, it refers to all the uses in the C residence zone. Principal and special permit as uh being uses that are allowed. And I understand uh perhaps that you don't want, you know, single and two-family homes um to start inserting themselves in industrial zone. That might be part of the problem um you're trying to resolve. But there's a lot of other uses in those zone, which I'll go over, um which, you know, seemed to me to make sense continuing in an industrial zone. Uh, off-street parking facilities not allowed. Uh, oil, propane, natural gas storage not allowed in the industrial number two zone. Uh, you will allow indoor contract parking facilities. Uh, you will allow brew pubs, uh and you will allow a municipal utility plant or storage yard by special permit. Um, then there's a bunch of uses that are being stripped. Again, any oil uh storage, propane storage, natural gas storage will not be allowed. Gas stations and servicing of motor vehicles will no longer be allowed. Uh asphalt plants and concrete plants will not be allowed, recycling operations will not be allowed. Uh, rock crushing and processing facilities um will not be allowed in the industrial number two zone uh uh indoor or outdoor or all or any any form. Uh, motor vehicle storage yards not allowed, uh transfer stations, recycling centers, and composting centers not allowed. Commercial recreation establishments not allowed. That's like the Sono Field House would be a use that's not allowed. Uh, hotels not allowed, adult daycare not allowed, and you've got me on helicopter landing sites. I get it, uh, not allowed. Uh, animal care uh is a use that's retained uh with similar restrictions as exists today. Um, you talked a little bit about the idea that multifamily dwellings will be allowed. Um, they will only be allowed on upper floors when they're not more than fifty percent of the floor area. You want, uh, you know, the the regs are suggesting that fifty percent of the floor area be for a more industrial or commercial use. If you think about how this might be used, um you've got to think about, well, what uses are remaining that you're putting apartments above. So light manufacturing, you're putting apartments above that warehouse, you would put apartments above that. Uh, transportation maintenance terminals, perhaps you could put apartments above that. Um, this is a yard, so it's not really a building. Offices can't be on the lower floor, so they can only be on the upper floor anyway. Uh, the printing established the R and D facility. So there's very few uses left over and the residential use could really only be accessory to it. So on large sites like Mr. Turzian's, it doesn't really make much sense. It perhaps it makes sense if you've got a small shop manufacturing facility and you have a few apartments upstairs um that are less than fifty percent of the floor area. Uh, but it 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 doesn't really add much uh in the way of incentive, if anything at all, to uh properties that are large. And Mr. Turzian knows about, owns about four acres on Fountain Street and over an acre on uh on South Main Street. Um, and then that commercial B of Storage Yard is a new definition uh that would be allowed by special permit on large sites over a half acre, or I'm sorry, it's on all sites, but it's a special permit for large sites. And then uh a successful reg that again doesn't really apply to Mr. Turzian's property uh uh which is the historic preservation ring would be added to the zone. So we talked about that C residence zone reference, and and this is a chart that specifically uh lists the uses that are brought in by that reference to the C residence zone. And again, you've got uh single and two-family, which uh I get, uh is a current moratorium on those in the industrial zone. But then you get into a bunch of uses and some of them to me uh kind of make sense. So parks and playgrounds not allowed, nurseries and farms not allowed, museums not allowed, places of worship's not allowed, schools not allowed. Um, again, this public utility supply and storage facility is not allowed, even though it's allowed in the C residence zone. Public and private colleges, schools or institutions for the handicap, halfway houses for up to twelve persons, cemeteries, youth day camps, firehouses not allowed. Again, that seems pretty congruous with industrial zones. Nursery school not allowed, convalescent or nursing home not allowed. Land residential development's not allowed, group homes not allowed. Community residence is not allowed, public or non-profit community center, congregant housing, elderly housing and athletic fields not allowed. So taken together, this is not just about Mr. Turzian's ability to continue to run his contractor's yard, earth processing contract from material storage yard as defined on the new reg. It's about the investment that he has made in his properties as he has bought them over the years, some of which going back more than thirty years he's owned. Having made those investments, understanding what he was allowed to do with those properties. So yes, there is the one concern about how can he operate going forward and do and operate his business and his livelihood and do so with confidence and clarity. And the language that you reviewed tonight would go a long way towards that. It's about, you know, what's the value of this property at the end of the day and what's left? So again, I think you might find this helpful as you consider the wide impact of these regulations. Similarly, I'll take some quotes for you out of the Norwalk industrial zone study. Industrial and commercial uses are key resources for economic development and job growth. That's page one. That urban industrial uses include serviced, focused, heavy commercial, like industrial service businesses such as contractors that are vital for the economic well-being of a region. That's on page eight. There's a sizable demand for industrial space in Fairfield County. That's page twelve. It is essential to protect industrial zones as an employment center, it's on page nineteen. So I ask in my letter, I'm sure many of you have read it, two basic questions. One is, does this seem fair to the landowner? And we submit that, again, it is not. And is, does this make sense long-term for Norwalk? Because really, ultimately, that's your goal. Because you are stripping so many uses from the industrial number two zone, there's really no other choice than all of these landlords continuing to operate as they are for as long as they can. Because there is no carrot. I agree completely with Director Kleppen with the idea of an incentive, a carrot and guide rails. And you've done that very successfully in some of your other zones, your CBD zone, your Sono zone, where you give property owners an option of significant value and you require design review standards, or you require public realm space, or you require more assistance with workforce housing or a fee to help the city provide more assistance workforce housing. So there is a big incentive for redevelopment and guide rails for how to get there that ultimately helps the city recharge. Here, I don't see the balance of carrot with guide rails. What I see is, you know, you're kind of putting these property owners in a box and there's no way out. So, you know, ultimately, I think these things will continue. Of course, you create a lot of non-conforming uses. Certainly, the language that you were looking at would help clarify again how those are going to be treated moving forward as they exist. But ultimately, in the long term, you know, what if you waved the magic wand and all of these uses did in fact disappear thirty years from now, fifty years from now? What would be the viability of the city in terms of uses that are necessary to maintain it and build its future? So, and when you have much less land for these uses, what you may find is that people trying to protect their businesses and just make a living are going to do things probably not in conformance with the regulations. You're going to have even more violations to deal with because there's just not going to be the spots where you can go and do it in a conforming fashion. So I will reiterate what Liz said, which is, Mr. Turzian would very much like not to be included in the rezoning from industrial number one to industrial number two. But there's also a specific asterisk to that point, because as we look at Exhibit C, which I provided with my letter, there I have included a fourth column, this one right here, which is the industrial number one uses. So even if Mr. Turzian's properties were left in industrial number one, the earth processing and contractors' material storage yards are only allowed on sites that are less than half an acre. So that still doesn't get them into conformance with the regulations. So we would ask that you, and it also doesn't necessarily make sense to me because a larger site, you have more opportunity to contain your use within the site and more opportunity to do some more buffering. Again, his sites are total four acres on Fountain Street, total an acre on South Main Street slash Woodward Ave. So we would ask that you eliminate that size restriction in the industrial number one zone as well. That would be at least something that Mr. Turzian would be would prefer. I think, I think actually he'd prefer that you just throw this whole thing in the can, but certainly if you're going to move forward with it, he would like to stay in the industrial one zone and be a conforming use. That's still saying in the industrial one zone, an elimination of two-thirds of the available uses. It's elimination of about eighty percent of uses to be shifted to this industrial two zone. That's the completion of my comments.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Jim Murphy.
Mr. Murphy, you're muted.
Should be a little icon on your screen, Jim, of a microphone. You just have to click that. Should be at the bottom of your screen or bottom left. If not, we can come back to you. We have Adam Blank.
Can you hear it?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Brian or Steve, are you able to allow me to share my screen?
Yes, give me one second.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. You guys can see me now, right?
Yes.
Great. Adam Blank, live here in Norwalk. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of Sono Wharf LLC. And one of its principals, Keith Brown. Keith and Sono Wharf own a good deal of property in South Norwalk, particularly on Chestnut Street. And we have some, some a few specific requests for some changes on the proposed regulations for the industrial zone. And also, just big picture, you know, we, we, we think that his properties or the bulk of them really ought to be in the Sono Station Design District. And I want to give you a little bit of information about that now and then. But I won't fight you too hard on it today and we'll, we'll, we'll leave it for another day when, when we come in with an application. But I want you to be aware of sort of what's brewing on the horizon with this property. The share my screen. So this is up here. You've got Chestnut Street in here. And the green is the Sono Station Design District. The yellow here is D. You've got a neighborhood business. You've got I two, proposed, a little bit of C residence. So Keith owns I'll pull up his property. What I've outlined in yellow here.
Attorney Blank, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you tell us our, this map we're looking at, is this the proposed zoning or the current zoning?
So this map here is the proposed zoning.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, so this is the, the under the proposed zoning and what we would suggest is that his parcels, which he's got along on this side of Chestnut Street. And he's got it, right now, this is a paved lot right across from fifty-seven Chestnut. I think Director Kleppen mentioned Space Cat earlier as one of his favorite industrial uses in Norwalk, which is right in this main parcel here. So this these properties, which they've recently acquired. This was the railroad right-of-way. That's now owned by Sono Wharf. And if you look at, I can overhead here, you can see the train stations right here. You've got Henry and Mulvoy. So Sono Wharf owns right here with access to Mulvoy and Henry all the way down. This is behind what's the shelters new building or remodeled building.
Mr. Blank, sorry, it's Mike Nusak here. I cannot see a cursor or what you're referring to. It's just the original proposed zoning map.
I was going to make that same.
Yes, I think the way you're talking, it says if you, I think you're, you're you've got some, something else in front of your screen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, is that better?
Oh, yeah.
All right, sorry. Sometimes when you jump from, from a PDF to the browser, it doesn't follow. So Keith's properties.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
In, in yellow here, this is what Sono Wharf owns currently. This is fifty-seven Chestnut here, which has got the kombucha brewery, which is actually awesome if you haven't been there. And Space Cat, which is the beer brewery, which is great as well. This is the parking lot across the street that serves this building. And then they've got a contractor's yard or two back here, as well as the railroad right-of-way up to Mulvoy. On the aerial, again, the train station is up here. Mulvoy and Henry is here. This is like forty to, I think, eighty feet wide. It varies, which is wide enough to now provide vehicular access and pedestrian. But from the, essentially, from directly across the street from the railroad parking lot, straight to Merritt Place and into these parcels, which are all owned by Sono Wharf and across the street. It's just about four acres of land. And the fifty-seven Chestnut is, it's an old mill building. If you haven't been in there, it's a beautiful historic building with some great tenants predominantly manufacturing or light industrial. There is some office use. And it's certainly the intention for that building to be preserved and fixed up in connection with a larger development. And again, so we, this is proposed for the I two, or predominantly proposed for the I two zone. We think it better fits in the SSDD. It's not currently in the SSDD either. But we, we believe that, you know, there's a number of reasons why this this whole section really should be part of the SSDD. You're going to have direct access to the train station compared to pretty much, not all, but a large number of the SSDD parcels that are already zoned SSDD. They're, they're much, much further away from the train station than what this property would be. We also now, by being able to access from the back, right now, there is some concern on Chestnut Street among area residents of contractors, trucks and vehicular traffic on Chestnut in congestion, which we can avoid with our access this way. We'd also be removing some industrial uses, which might conflict with some of the residential uses, which I think the neighbors appreciate. And in addition to that, not, none of these parcels, there's not a single, there's not a single housing unit on the site currently, which means that if it was zoned SSDD and it had a substantial amount of, you know, multifamily and other uses on the site, there's no displacement of residents, which, which is, you know, a common concern about gentrification is you're pushing people out for this new project. We would entirely avoid that. The and, and I should mention that in the, I go back to sharing my screen once more. The in our view, again, we don't, we don't care much because we don't, we don't own it, but, but in our view, the Housing Authority, the Norwalk Housing Authority, this is King Kennedy in here. And then what was Columbus Magnet School is here, that, that this should also be SSDD. And we think that that allows the Housing Authority the ability to do, and we've talked with the Housing Authority about that possibility, which they have support for. They think that the, that not, it's not that they have any imminent plans with King Kennedy, but if it was zoned SSDD, that gives them a lot of options in the future about doing like they did on Day Street with the Washington Village, potentially partnering up and with somebody to reproduce the units that are on that site currently and then add some which is now a low income, add some middle income and then add some market at a higher density than what currently exists there. It's a very low-density development. We've spoken with the city and Alan Lowe about the Columbus parcel and, and they don't know what the plans are for that, but, but see the SSDD zoning for that as, as potentially being very helpful for them and, and certainly having no downside. We've similarly talked with redevelopment and everyone we've spoken with, and some, we've talked with some of the neighborhood leaders. We, we've either gotten wholehearted support for the, that, the zone change to SSDD. Or at worst, it's been a, you know, we, we don't see a downside to it. We don't have any real objection to it, but we don't have a strong feeling. We, again, for our property, we'd be taking traffic off Chestnut. We're not displacing residents. It, it's really in the heart of South Norwalk. It's the most transit-oriented you can be. So we, we'd like it to be zoned SSDD. If, if you deem that that's sort of part of your purview now, great, wonderful. If, if you don't, just know that we'll be coming back with an application in, in the not immediate future, but in the near future, which will in part seek to have this zoned SSDD. And we don't want you to say that it's a shock and we should have raised something when you're looking at the industrial zones. So that's my, that's the big picture on, on some nitty-gritty. And I'll move away from the SSDD because you've got a lot to worry about tonight and into the future on the industrial zone changes. A few specific comments. I did submit a letter today. I don't know if it's made its way to you yet. But, but a couple, I hope, easy pickings in the industrial two, your proposed reg. And I can, if I share it, my screen, I can pull it up. The reg you've got proposes. Are you, are you seeing the live workspace here?
Yes.
Okay, so in the, and the live workspace is, it's, that, that doesn't count against your density in the industrial two. This is your proposed drag. But there's nowhere in the reg when you list the permissible uses. Artist live workspace is not listed as identified as a permissible use. So I think that potentially as, you know, L, it should include artist live workspace as a permissible use. I, I think that's an oversight, but hopefully that can get added in. We'd also similarly like you to add in artist workspace, not live workspace, but just straight workspace as another permissive use in the I two. And then additionally, shared with different screen. Share to a different screen. We had some more more sort of substantive, I would say. Suggestions for the historic reg. I did submit a red line which you have. And I would hope that you would. Adopt the language in that red line over what's currently in your proposed reg. It does a couple of things, this, the the reg that you guys have. Proposed comes straight from the SSDD, I think it's verbatim from the SSDD Historic Preservation Reg. And you know that that reg and this proposed reg. What it's referring to the obviously the historic structure that's going to be preserved. It routinely refers to it as the principal structure. And. I think your your practice has not always been that the historic structure that's being preserved is in fact the principal structure on the property. Which I think can be problematic down the road. And for approvals. And and we think that, again, because the historic reg only kicks in, it's a special permit, it's very, you've got a whole lot of discretion as to whether you're going to allow any. Variance from your regulations for the preservation of a historic structure. So whether it's the principal structure, a minor structure, something in between. It shouldn't be the the be all and end all about whether or not that. An applicant can seek relief under the regulation, you can always deny it if you're not satisfied that the structure is sort of worthy of preserving or worthy of. Benefits, but we'd like it to remove the the principle. From the the definition, which again, in your actual practice, if you looked at what you've previously approved, where historic has been preserved. Often it has not been the principal structure despite the language in the regulation. We've also. Changed, this one's a little clearer. To delete one of the criteria that you would have to determine. Is that the structure in question requires some measure of regulatory relief to allow for its preservation. And and just because there's some subjectivity to that, we we thought that would be better. Out particularly in the cases where you might feel that. You know, the the historic structure does not pose a risk of sort of imminent demolition. But there's no deed restriction or there's no zoning approval that ensures its preservation. And so that this historic reg is kind of nice because you're, you you can require a historic structure to be preserved. Even even if it's not necessarily imminently going to be destroyed, you can sort of ensure it to be preserved in perpetuity. So we we'd ask that this. Criteria be be removed. And. We've clarified that a maximum requirement can be exceeded, including density, which again. Has been your actual practice, but we just thought it was clear to to outright say it in the reg. Additionally, this is sort of an I two specific concern. But you've got very limited ground floor uses that are permitted in the industrial two. We'd like to. Allow on the historic reg, if you're preserving historic structure, that you be allowed some freedom. On the first floor use, that it could be a use that might otherwise be prohibited. And I can tell you specific to fifty seven Chestnut, if you've been in that building. Currently, again, there's there's Space Cad and and East Coast Kombucha. There's Bruce's Marble and Tile, I think is the name, the full name. And then there's there's a, there's some office space in there, and there's some vacant office space. That the client would like to get leased up, that's on the first floor. Under your proposed reg, you couldn't. Lease the rest of the space on the first floor as office, that's really better suited for office in that. Particular building for that particular space. So again, we'd we'd like you to allow some flexibility for first floor use. On historic, on the historic preservation reg. We've we've. Talked through with your staff those changes previous to tonight, I think. That they were supportive of those changes. And and hope that you'll consider adoption. I think. That's probably all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Doug Hempstead.
Chairman Chris, how are you?
Good, we can hear you.
Okay. Listen, thanks for having the hearing tonight. A lot has been said, and I agree with a lot of the concerns that those people who provide services to the citizens and to the city of Norwalk and those industrial areas. I think need some. Reworking, if you can, of what's being proposed, a seventy five percent reduction in. The amount of industrial space, me seems. Extreme, in my opinion, that's part of my experiences as zoning commissioner and on the city council for twenty six years. I can say to you, sometimes when you're evaluating plans. For now and trying to take in what's been happening the last few years and where you, the trends may go. Don't necessarily work out. One of my first. Experiences on my first term in the council ever. Was the school system was coming out and telling all the schools because they said kids don't live in condo, will never need any new schools in the Sea of Noa. All right, and they sold off about six schools and properties. Things changed. And. I think it's important that we retain as much industrial property we have, we have slothed off some over the years, certainly, and and done reuse form. A lot of these provide services with heavy equipment and that. I don't think we need any more trucks on the highway. Any more trucks on the streets. I live on Route fifty three. Trust me, I can tell you how many large sum trucks come from Danbury down with loads of either asphalt or something. Down these roads, so. Please give careful consideration. To the rights of these individuals that. Even though they're going to be allowed to do things as long as they're there. You're certainly reducing their ability to expand their businesses as they exist. I know it's late and I'm not going to go any further, I just want careful consideration for those people there, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll try Jim Murphy again, he's on a few phones, so I might have to see which phone works.
How about now, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, thank you, sorry, I had a little mouse malfunction before. Thank you for listening, I I report, I sent you a letter. That you should all have earlier and I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Mr. Murphy. Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, Jim, I I muted you, if I think you have a couple other connections going on your end, if you can. Try to either mute them or turn the volume down, that would help. Again, an echo.
Okay, and and also please provide us with your address.
All right, can you hear me now?
Now we can, thank you.
I apologize again, having technical difficulties. I'm Jim Murphy, I represent LaJoy's Auto Wrecking, LaJoy's Auto Parts, DNR and DLJ Incorporated. At forty and forty six Meadow Street. I'm not going to get into everything, I do want to. Piggyback on what Liz Succi and Craig Flaherty had to say. Specifically. Mr. Flaherty mentioned that, you know, you're basically putting Brian Turzian and Mr. Seaman and others in a box. I feel the same way. And in my letter that you should all have. You know. I specifically feel that. With all the taxes that we do pay in this town. I I realize that we will be preexisting nonconforming. And allowed to continue our use. But I strongly believe that. Our ability to expand and or upgrade and modernize our business will be crippled. And that concerns me deeply as I believe that. You know, in the very near future, we are going to need new offices, a warehouse and a maintenance facility. And it is my dream. For those who are familiar with our property to. Change the fence lines, change the gates, change the fences to make it much more. Of a of a eye candy versus an eyesore. With that said, I I strongly also. Urge you to leave us in industrial one, not industrial two. As I said, I I feel that will cripple our ability to expand and upgrade as well as lower. Our actual property tax, not our lower the tax, but lower our values of our properties. That said. I just again asked that you. Leave a majority of the industrial one that is actually heavy industrial. Partial, part of it was changed fifteen years ago to light industrial. Which make everything a special permit. And that's it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Judy.
Yes, I'll try to keep this very short. I just am focused in like on a laser beam on the Norden property.
I'm sorry, can 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 we have your full name and address, please?
Judy Harris, seven Peacock Drive in Norwalk.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I knew I should have done that. Anyway. I was part of the group that hired the attorney when you were looking at the, they request the Norick special permit request for the warehouse slash condo. Units that were ultimately withdrawn rather than acted on. And you had a series of experts at that point in time. Who recommended that you look very particularly at that, at the Norden property as a separate. Use, a separate area, and I don't think that study was ever conducted. So we haven't recontacted our attorney. And. I am concerned with some of the uses that would be. Allowed in. The industrial two. Area as it relates to the Norden property. There are some of them in particular, I don't understand. I understand the desire of the city to. Increase the health of the city revenues, tax revenues and jobs, but. I think in boosting tax revenues, you need to. Also keep in mind the tax revenue base of your residential properties. And that is what Norden is concerned about. I also, in the presentation, I noticed that. I haven't been through. Everything, the the commercial storage facilities are both special permit and as of right in the in the. In the industrial zone too. I mean, I I see it treated both ways, one is greater than, the other is greater than. I think one was meant to be less than. And they're both greater than. I'm concerned about a municipal plant going in at Norden. The contractor parking facility. As well. Building materials, storage. Yards. Which I. I don't know how you can deal with, to be honest, the Norden property, it's really sort of a legacy property. And my view of it is it's very similar to the three headquartered properties that are just south of the Merritt on in Stanford. Which were also headquarters. And they were repurposed as. The similar type properties. I don't, I think Norden probably needs a lot more. Money poured into it to do that to it because it's been. Disused for such a long period of time. Anyway. I sent an email. I, that's all I, I really, the other thing I noticed is that. The special permits. Are. Without. Without criticism, rarely denied the special permit requests. I would absolutely love, by the way, to have. The copy of the charts that Craig Flaherty presented. Because I thought those were a very concise way of. Doing all this. I I think that. Yeoman's job has been done by Steve on all this. And dealing with all the computing, competing, you know, constituency groups. And I guess I don't understand why the separate study for Norden was not done. Your consultants, your experts recommended it. And I mean, listen to everybody and they recommended it and. I mean, those are people employed by you, but. No. It hasn't been done. If someone can explain to me why. That was not a relevant study to be done, I would love that. I would love to hear. All right, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Peter Sosnow.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi, Peter Sosnow, I live in Shorefront Park, number seventy. A board member with the Shorefront Park Improvement Association as well. And before I read a brief letter from our association, I just really want to commend, you know, planning and zoning for addressing these complex issues. Really a lot, lot there, so. The letter reads, Shorefront Park is an historic residential neighborhood in South Norwalk, composed of eighty single family homes. We support residential homes and residential neighborhoods throughout South Norwalk. The city's historic South Norwalk residential neighborhoods enhance quality of life for a diverse cross section of South Norwalk residents. And furtherance of the quiet enjoyments of our properties. We oppose industrial zone study recommendations that would permit any current residential dwelling unit to be rezoned as industrial two. And recommend that all preexisting residential dwelling units within the shaded map areas be permanently zoned residential. In order to sustain existing low density residential dwelling units in South Norwalk. And preserve existing neighborhoods and prevent gentrification of historic residential homes in South Norwalk. Since two thousand and sixteen, the city of Norwalk has added hundreds of high rise, high density units on Water Street. Without commensurate infrastructure upgrades. These developments about residential neighborhoods, including Shorefront Park, NOR, Mac Streets, Quintard, Burrit, Woodward, Harbor Shores, Harbor View and Village Creek. In consequence of these developments, South Norwalk residents are burdened with increased traffic congestion, air pollution, water pollution and flooding. Increased public safety concerns hazardous walking and biking conditions, a lack of traffic safety and parking enforcement. And reduced quality of life for the residents of these neighborhoods. We oppose changes to the code that would allow for the loss of any preexisting residential dwelling units, including nonconforming residential units due to rezoning. We hope the esteemed members of the Planning and Zoning Commission are sensitive to unique conditions in our South Norwalk neighborhoods. And will amend the proposed changes accordingly to protect every single preexisting single or multifamily home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Melissa Murphy.
Hi, I'm Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I just raised my hand in case my husband couldn't get on with his computer, so. I'm all good, thanks, I'm not really all good because this is very disconcerting to us, we are very, very upset. About this proposed change. The history of my my grand, my grandfather starting this business ninety years ago. And and how proud we are that we've been able to employ. In Norwalk and a town that we love. And we do well. For the town and the surrounding towns in Fairfield County, and it's a, it's a creature that needs to keep living. For the good of of it all, we need to be recycling for the good of our of our earth and for our community. And strangling and and not using. And and taking away the property. And and taking away the properties by 70% is absolutely crippling. And I didn't have anything to say, but I did. So I I'm off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Bart S. Or you just have to unmute yourself. It should be at the bottom of your screen. There should be a little microphone icon that you can click on. It should unmute you. There you go.
Well, thank you so much. I'm Bart from Pine Partners. And I got to apologize if we have any bad audio. I'm actually out of the country at the moment. But we have a number of properties on Eli Avenue and Lexington Avenue. 151, 153, 155, Eli. 95, 97 and 103 Lexington. On and a half a dozen properties. I want to echo the concern about lack of notification. On the one point. Second, these properties are primarily residential and affordable housing. On that, and I think they're going to be classified as C. And I appreciate that C is probably not sufficient, not only for these properties. But a number of the ones in the area would be nonconforming as they're more than two families, there's six, 10 others. As well, and I want to. Also echo Mr. Flaherty's comments. I think some good work was done, but adding carrots and sticks in there is always a. Our carrots and guardrails is a great point. I want to also support Mr. Blake's points on the corridor to the train station. And lastly, echo Peter from Shorefront Park about protecting the housing in the area. So those were, I tried to be brief because I know it's been a long night for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Joe Seaman.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Joe Seaman from Chestnut Street, Merritt Street. I own a few of the properties down there, the transfer station. I just want to say that I'm very disappointed with. How this map has come out. I feel like there's a target on us. I went from the highest use, which in the 90s. The zoning board asked us to go down there. Because they didn't want us on Connecticut Avenue or on South Smith Street. We went down there, we cleaned up the neighborhood. We put tenants in our buildings. We started a business that my father has been in this city, was born here. I got one letter from you guys for letting me know what was going on and I own four properties. I don't know where the other three went, but my tax bills all come. I just feel like no thought was put in this whatsoever. I've gone and got all our permits that we over needed. There's illegal yards everywhere and we tried to do the right thing. And Turzian, LaJoyce, we've all been around for years. Anytime the community asks us for anything, we've always been there for them. And now you guys just want to try to push us out. You're making, you're saying that I'm grandfathered in, but now if I'm grandfathered in. You're not allowing me to change with the times in the society. If my transfer station wants to go to something different, I don't have that opportunity anymore. You're making me into neighborhood business? How how does that? I didn't buy neighborhood business. Zoning asked me, told me I had to buy I-1. So I protected myself by buying I-1 and now you're taking it away from me. I don't understand how that works. And even how any of this works. Nobody has ever contacted me for any kind of consultation on the neighborhood or anything. I just feel it's very unfortunate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I know Liz is representing a second client. I don't know Lou. She speaks twice. I don't know how you want to.
If she's representing a separate client, I think. We ought to let her speak.
Liz, we can't hear you if you're speaking. There might be a. Audio input issue. No, there we go. Now I can hear you.
Okay. Do you have video?
Sorry for interrupting. But if there are other clients that you're representing. Why don't you do all of that now?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Minister Schulman. I mean, honestly, actually, I'm just going to follow up on the comments that Mr. Seaman raised. He kind of jumped ahead of me, but there were a few points that he had asked me to make. That he didn't make during his presentation. So I just want to make sure that those are added to the record on his behalf.
Okay.
So again, thank you, Mr. Schulman and members of the commission for the opportunity to appear before you and speak on this issue tonight. I have represented Joe Seaman, JL Seaman and other Seaman entities for several years. And as Mr. Seaman mentioned. They strongly object to the zone changes and text amendments under consideration for the properties he owned, the properties he owned. The properties he owns on Chestnut Street and Woodward Avenue. First, on behalf of Mr. Seaman, I would reiterate my previous comments with respect to tonight's, the notice of tonight's meeting and ask that they be so noted in the record. As many of you may recall from comments I raised at the moratorium hearings. On behalf of Mr. Seaman, the proposed zone change from I-1 to de-residence on Merritt Street is significant and far reaching for him. An individual and a business that has been part of the fabric of Norwalk for more than 50 years. As Mr. As explained by Mr. Seaman in his letter to you of May 2022, which I hope you've read and considered. He owns properties at 44, 46 and 54 Chestnut Street and 3 Merritt Street, which are all zone industrial one. He also rents 149 Woodward Avenue, which has a fully permitted contractor's yard at that site. Mr. Seaman and his family, as he indicated, were directed by City of Norwalk staff some 25 years ago. To establish the transfer station on Chestnut Street after having investigated other properties within the city. He's owned and operated manufacturing, transfer station and contractors' yards for years, employing 35 workers. Providing demolition, construction, recycling and plowing services, dumpsters to local businesses. From A Papa John Construction to King Industries, Nora Cove Marina and Bloom Brothers, among others. And as well as private homeowners. He has supplemented DPW snow plowing on Chestnut Street without compensation. And has consistently provided dumpsters and other assistance to neighborhood groups during cleanup events and when other needs emerge. Mr. Seaman is an essential business that helps drive the local economy by supplying materials to hundreds of, excuse me. By providing services to hundreds of contractors and thereby keeps them and their businesses ongoing. Further, his business is green as he accepts and recycles construction spoils and other debris that would typically land up, end up in landfills or improperly discarded. Between real and property taxes, he and his entities paid more than $80,000 annually to the city of Norwalk for the Chestnut and Merritt Street parcels. And on his various pieces of equipment. The expansive zone change and text amendments proposed today, once again imperil Mr. Seaman's future and will forever impact this longstanding and valuable property owner. Reclassifying his properties from I-1 to neighborhood business on Merritt Street will render his businesses and uses nonconforming. This will effectively eliminate any expansion plans or possibilities and create future difficulties for existing and and possibly future tenants. Services or technologies they provide. Since all of the users and tenants in the Merritt Street property would be prohibited in the neighborhood business zone. By reclassifying these properties, most if not all would not be able to expand into additional space. As that would likely be viewed as an impermissible expansion. Even worse. Should one of his manufacturing, industrial, commercial space tenants, tendencies become available, he would not be able to re-lease the space unless the new tenant is the same. Nonconforming use. So I would, I would suggest to you that modified language, modified language under consideration should also be applicable to Mr. Seaman and his properties. And the reason for this is twofold. First of all, consider this example. One of Mr. Seaman's tenant is JFL Custom Builders, which occupies with proper permits in 3,600 square feet. And is a woodworking business with six employees. If this space becomes vacant. Mr. Seaman would not be immediately able to release the space. Instead, he will be placed in the unenviable and uncertain position of having to persuade staff that a substitute tenant is the same as the departing nonconforming one. Should he not be successful, he will either be required to A, appeal the determination to the zoning board of appeal. Appeals, which requires an application, filing fee, notice to neighbors and a public hearing. Or two, submit an application to the zoning board of appeals with a $500 filing fee. To persuade that board that the replacement nonconforming use is as appropriate or more appropriate to the neighborhood than the prior nonconforming use. This will also require him to notify neighbors of a hearing, attend and present a request to the ZBA. And pay for legal notices and other fees. If he's successful before the ZBA, he may be exposed to appeals by grieved parties. If he's unsuccessful. He'll be required to commence an appeal and to overturn the board's decision. These actions are costly and time consuming and their outcomes are all uncertain. Imagine all of this process just to relit 3,600 square feet. And it's even worse if it's a smaller space that currently has permits. Finds itself in the same situation such as Menresa Fabric, which occupies a total of 500 square feet. If that were to become available, the same tortured process might be the one that he would have to follow. I won't reiterate again, but I ask that you add it to the record with respect to Mr. Seaman's comments. Mr. Seaman's position, the comments that I've raised previously about the applicable sections of the plan of conservation development. And my comment that zone changes and text amendment, the don't changes and text amendments proposed will thwart. The future planning goals identified in the P O C D. And make this a very unfriendly business environment in which to do, to do, conduct business. Again, just as the zoning regulations seek to eliminate nonconforming uses, those very nonconforming uses are constitutionally protected vested property rights and will continue. Map changes or text amendments will not result in them being eliminated or ceasing to operate. So the question is again, how can Mr. Seaman and his uses on Merritt Street and on Woodward Avenue. Coexist with residential and other neighbors? Well, how can this be achieved in a way that does not impair his ability? To to continue his properly permitted tendencies or contractors' yards. And as I previously explained, that all rests. In enforcement. And again, I ask you to make part of the record for his his matter and his objection to the zone changes. All of the comments that I previously stated with respect to Brian Turgeon's proposal. Finally. I therefore urge you to reconsider the severe measures you've suggested, the zone change and text amendment and modify this proposal to exclude Mr. Seaman's properties from the list of parcels. To be rezoned from industrial one to neighborhood business and as far as Woodward Avenue is concerned to industrial number two. And leave his classifications as they exist. Or clarify the regulations to include, to include uses that become nonconforming by virtue of rezoning to neighborhood business on Chestnut. To allow them to continue in the same manner in which the regulation modification language suggests that contractors' yards be allowed to continue and expand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I've been on the receiving end of listening calls. I know it's a long evening. I just want to echo a couple of things that have been said.
Apologize, Shannon. Your dress, please.
Sorry, Shannon O'Toole, Ganderco, 163 Chestnut Hill Road, Norwalk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I should know that. Um, I just want to echo. Some of the points they, by Mr. Seaman and obviously Attorney Suchi just went through detailed. Understanding of what's at stake for his properties and the other landowners down there. I, the one thing that I do want to. Bring up, I know that on the agenda, it did say that you may be taking action on this item this evening. As far as I can tell, and forgive me with Zoom, it's hard to tell. It seems like there's only four commissioners on this Zoom at this point. It's some seem to be going in and out, or maybe five just popped on. Something to this magnitude, I would hope that there would be a strong majority of the commissioners available to vote on it. Because it is something that affects so many businesses in such a large amount of area in the city and would have longstanding effects.
Anything else?
No, that's all. I just, it's like I said, it's hard to tell with Zoom, but it's just such a huge. A huge decision and a lot of points have been brought up tonight. And one thing I noticed. Was discussed earlier that the waterfront will be dealt with separately. It seems like if we're going to go through. Something this large and such a big change. That it would be looked at as one big overall project, not waiting to make other decisions down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane C C.
Good evening, everyone. Diane C C, Olmstead Place in Norwalk. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Before I begin my comments, I just want to say that I agree wholeheartedly with Attorney Suchi's. Opening comments in regards to the inadequacy of a small legal notice. In a local paper as what the city would accept is sufficing to. Get the word out to all of the, not only the affected property owners. But abutting property owners and to the community at large. And communication of these matters really shouldn't have to fall to community groups. I I think the city needs to. Make a concerted effort to do a better job. Of not only informing people of potential changes. But making it easy for people to get to the relative information. And to that point, I did have a discussion the other day with Director Steve Kleppin. That the materials, the way they were presented on the website really left a lot to be desired in terms of understanding. What exists now, what's being proposed. I think it was a good attempt to have the interactive map, but it didn't really work well. And it was a little frustrating actually to to use that to try to understand the scope of the changes. And then having said that, I just want to be sure that. I preface my comments. On behalf of the association so that you know that I'm referring basically to the East Norwalk neighborhood. 06855 zip code. And but I'm going to share some concerns with you that are relative to both us and to South Norwalk. Especially talking about the potential size of some industrial use applications that could be coming forward. And the impact that they'll have on our community. So we do want to. Say that we applaud the removal of several of the most objectionable industrial uses. From the former I-1 zone and also within the what soon to become the former restricted industrial zone. And we certainly. Want to make it clear that we support. The small scale industrial operations that we have in our community now. I'll talk in a minute about our concerns about larger scale. Because we feel that Norwalk is going to become the path of least resistance for large scale operations. Of industrial uses. That don't really bring a financial or jobs or or economic benefit to Norwalk. And yet the very nature of their businesses and the size of their businesses would indicate that they operate regionally. So in other words, there would be large operators here whose business model depends on them serving, for example, all of Fairfield County. And we realize that those businesses need to exist for, you know, for the good of the entire region. However, we don't think that they all need to be placed in Norwalk and service the, you know, the existing surrounding communities. Whose own zones don't actually allow these types of industrial uses, certainly not to the size and scale of what you're considering this evening. I want to speak first briefly on Norton Park. So as one of the prior speakers mentioned to you, this is the parcel that was very controversial. Ultimately had a special permit withdrawn, as you all know. But the fact of the matter is, is that it, even tomorrow morning. The way that the zone is right now is restricted industrial. And should this change go through to industrial two. There are still a number of objectionable uses that could come through. Both as site plan review or special permit. And you would have to consider that application. Part of the reason why we wanted to look at industrial zones to begin with is to understand. What would be the highest and best uses from an economic development point of view. And when you're looking at Norton Park, you're looking at a parcel that's really unique in in terms of its location. in, in terms of its location and its size and its potential uses. It's so unique, as other speakers have told you, that the professional consultants that were funded by the taxpayers made the recommendation to staff and to you that that parcel needs a completely independent study of its own. And yet, there was a decision made by staff not to do that. And simply to take that zone, change it from restricted industrial, which had its own problems, and lump it into industrial zone two. Within industrial zone two, I'm going to go over a list of objectionable uses and why we're concerned about it with Norton Park. Our position is that there should be a complete moratorium at this point on any applications for any use at Norton Park, unless and until the standalone study is completed. In the absence of a moratorium, the community could face a large application tomorrow. Steve Kleppen informed us this week, last week, all a blur, sorry, that just recently, that day, he had had a conversation with a prospective applicant who's looking specifically for a very large parcel for a municipal utility contract operation. And what those operations are, are contractors who support municipal and private utilities such as water, sewer, electric, et cetera. Usually, their business contracts with municipalities require them to have a minimum response time in case of emergencies. Some of you may recall that this was something that was debated when the A.J. Penna property was relocated from the Liberty Square area up on Route 123. Part of the reason why they needed to look at property here is because they have a contractual obligation to respond anywhere from Stamford to Bridgeport. I think it's within 45 minutes. And so we believe that Norwalk shouldn't be the path of least resistance for these types of operators that serve the regional area to only be looking for space here in order to comply with their municipal contracts. That shouldn't be a concern of staff or of this commission. And we fear that every day that goes by, it's a ticking clock where an application could come in tomorrow for a use that you otherwise would not want to see at Norton Park. And legally, as commissioners, you would be required to review that application. And let's face it, just as a prior speaker said, even if it's something that requires a special permit, those are seldom denied. When you go through all of the 13 special considerations that you have to take into account, the fact of the matter is that you can still approve an objectionable application just by conditioning it to death. And so that doesn't really serve the community well. So we're asking again tonight, I don't know how many times this is, to please consider, I'm setting up the process now to have a complete moratorium on applications at Norton Park until the funding to commission a study is approved and goes out to bid to take a look at that parcel. Okay, as to the site plan review and special permits that are being recommended for Norton and all the rest of I-2 and East Norwalk. And to just refresh your memory on the map, I, I won't ask Brian to bring that up. But basically, you're looking at Fifth Street, Fort Point, Van Zant, Winfield, Rowan, that whole area, they're kind of a buts 136 and the railroad tracks, all of which are but residential areas. So keep that in mind. The, we're objecting, for, for all of I-2, we're objecting to the loosening of requirements for commission review. As Mr. Kleppen highlighted to you tonight, he is looking to relieve those restrictions. And so right now, anything that's 20,000 square foot has to come before you for review, even as a site plan. And he's suggesting that you raise that to 50,000 square feet. So we think we understand what this looks like on the map, but I want to make sure that you understand, and certainly Mr. Kleppen can correct me if I'm wrong. But this means that, again, tomorrow for Norton Park, an application could come through for a 49,000 square foot operation that's within one of these uses. And you would have to consider that, and, or you wouldn't have to consider that. And basically, that would just come through as a, as a standard review. And if it met all of the requirements for the zoning code, it would get approved. And so we're requesting that the following uses be removed entirely as none of the following uses are likely to produce either the amount of quality of jobs or the incremental tax revenue that would be required to compensate for the disruption to our neighborhood, both in the I-2 along the railroad and I-2 at Norton Park, and would, wouldn't compensate for the impact on our property values and the irreparable quality of life degradation, including increased traffic, increased trucks, light pollution, air pollution, and noise. Um, Brian, am I able to share my screen for just one second so I can bring these up?
Yeah, hold on.
It's basically my document, but I just want to highlight one part of it there. I think I was muted. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, what I'm referring to is here. So we're looking for a moratorium to protect against any forthcoming applications for Norton Park until the study is done. But for the entire zone, we're looking for six of the recommended uses that fall between both site plan review and special permit review, depending on their size. And mostly what we're talking about here is both the size of an operation and also the nature of the operation itself. And so, for example, building material storage yards. As we understood it from Mr. Kleppen, for the parcels where those would be allowed, the limitation on the size of the storage yards is only limited to the size of what's allowed on the parcel. So to put it in simple terms, the larger the parcel, the larger the potential operation there. So we're suggesting that building material storage yards may be, you know, the type of things that are more local, servicing more local and small regionally, would probably be acceptable if they were under 5,000 square feet and they were on a parcel that's not abutting, immediately abutting a residential zone or parcel. Commercial vehicle, vehicle storage yards, we're recommending that those be excluded, all of them be excluded regardless, regardless of the size. Vehicle storage yards don't add anything to the employee base in terms of well-paying jobs. The vehicles themselves, as, as we understand it, wouldn't be something that would be taxed as part of the, the parcel operation and whatever building supports it. And again, if it's commercial vehicle storage yards, this is likely to be something that's large and, again, meant to service the region and not just the residents of Norwalk and the immediate surrounding area. Municipal utility plants and storage yards of any size, we would like that to be taken out for the ones that already exist in East Norwalk under our third taxing district, electric. Of course, those would stay and they would be grandfathered in as non, as nonconforming. But any other use for municipal utility plants and storage would end, you know, an operation that would be large. It would be something that would be servicing regionally at the expense of the quality of life of East Norwalk. This is also one of the types of businesses that is likely to be allowed to have 24/7/365 operations so that they have free access for movement within the plant and the storage yard, especially in cases of emergencies. Warehouses that are greater than 10,000 square feet, we would like that to come out. Right now, you have it in the regulations as site plan review for less than 20,000 square feet and special permit for over 20,000 square feet. Again, warehouses are, you know, back, you know, maybe 40, 50 years ago, warehouses employed a lot of people just by the nature of moving goods and accounting for things and office operations, et cetera. But as most of you know, nowadays warehouses are mostly automated and, and on the technology, all of their inventories are really kept electronically and through a technology. And so we wouldn't be anticipating any real significant job growth there. And I believe also with warehouses, because it's inventory and the goods of a company that would be ultimately for resale, that it wouldn't add anything to the grand list under business personal property tax. Because within the structure, only the business operation, things like desks and computers and phones and storage racks and forklifts and things would be taxable. So we respect the general data that Steve and the consultants put together on tax revenue and job growth. But as you'll see in a minute, I'm going to talk about the fact that the, the onus is really on staff to prove to us that those benefits of revenue and job generation would outweigh the negative impact on our community from a quality of life point of view. I'll take this opportunity too to remind you that all of these businesses require an excessive amount of truck traffic in and out. And again, because I believe that the city cannot regulate the hours of operation for any of the businesses that I have listed here, that unless there was an acceptable condition and that could impede someone's business operation, then all of these operations could have vehicles and trucks in and out all hours of the day and night. We don't have the infrastructure in East Norwalk for trucks. I know that some changes that have been made locally and by the state are done to be able to accommodate trucks. But we have spent over a decade trying to preserve our community to not have trucks coming in and out. We don't have the infrastructure for it. We don't have the, the, the enforcement to control it. And we certainly don't have the safety for pedestrians and, and even vehicles and, and bikes, et cetera. Indoor contractor parking facilities, again, we recognize the need for small operators and respect the operators that we have in our community now. But we're concerned with possible site plan reviews and special permits that would be excessive in size and assembling parcels that would have large contractor parking facilities. We're recommending that that come out unless it's under 5,000 square feet, which I think would certainly, you know, be able to have a small business operation there. And then finally, the transportation maintenance terminals of any size. This one is so kind of undefined that we don't really understand this, how out of scope this could be in terms of having transportation vehicles in and out that come into a facility that's maintaining them. But we certainly can expect that they are a number of vehicles and a lot of noise and a lot of activity. And again, based on any type of emergency operations, this is also another type of business that could very well be operating around the clock. So basically, what we're asking you to do tonight is you deliberate on this. And I also would suggest, based on everything that I heard from the folks in South Norwalk, that you may want to consider tabling this item because it seems like there's a lot of open questions and issues. But as, as you do, you know, continue to deliberate either tonight or in the future, we hope that you bear in mind the very premise of why this industrial zone change was taken up to begin with. Is my, it's my understanding, and I believe Mr. Kleppen have presented this to you, is that this came out of economic development with the goal of looking to spur the type of industrial development that we want here in the city to provide more jobs, better jobs, and to increase the tax revenue. The responsibility to prove that any of these industries of these sizes in these locations would do just that rests with staff. It doesn't rest with the community to say, we object to it, you know, because we don't think it's going to generate it. They really need to prove to the community that these benefits are going to far outweigh what this impact is going to be, especially on East Norwalk, a primarily residential community. We contend that most of these businesses are not of the nature to employ a large amount of people. And again, that there are likely to be operations that are of such a nature and size that they would be serving regional, right from Stanford all the way up to Bridgeport. And yet, our neighboring communities either don't allow them or simply don't want them there. So we urge you to remove the six, I'm sorry, the... Um, Brian, I don't know if you can bring this up or not, or, or maybe, I, maybe the commissioners will just have an image of this in their mind, but the, the bulk, the bulk and height schedule with the recommended changes. If you, if you look at what's currently in restricted industrial, we'll see that the change now for industrial two actually increases the height of the buildings. And I know that's something that Mr. Kleppen has told you is a primary goal in order to be able to have more capacity. But the fact of the matter is, is that we're looking at four stories that then will be as high as 65 feet, which is huge if you're considering that the parcels in East Norwalk all are but residential neighborhoods. And we know that you worked on this with staff to suggest that any story, starting with the third story of, of, of the building, would have to have a step back that goes back 10 feet. So this way from the street level and the residential level, it wouldn't seem to be as looming as it is. But I don't really think that that addresses the concern of a 65-foot parcel that's four stories or more, especially overlooking regular residential properties. I ask you to consider, when you're looking at that height, when you, when you look at that bulk and height chart, if you go over a few columns in the chart, you'll see that that height, they haven't added anything in to actually increase the setbacks. So for example, if you're looking at increased heights in buildings, but they're set way back from the residential building, it doesn't have that much of an impact. But what Mr. Kleppen is suggesting is that it only need a 10-foot setback from the property line of a residential structure. So I hope that you all have that picture in your mind of 65 feet next to residential, literally 10 feet away from the property line. And we don't think that that's acceptable. So we urge you to remove at least the six industrial uses from the proposed industrial two or modify the ones that we're suggesting you keep in there as viable, viable and desirable businesses, but on a much lower size and scale. And in the meantime, to at least ensure that no permit applications can be considered for Norton Park unless and until the separate study is complete. And I'll say just with a personal comment as well as I close up. In the past, you've, and all of these studies that we've been doing now for years and years and years, I think it's a good idea to do studies, obviously. But I don't think it's a good idea to do them and then have them sit on the shelf. And that's one type of issue we have in Norwalk. But I also don't think it's good to have studies of this magnitude being done that are going to impact our community for decades. And you're actually going to impact, as you heard from South Norwalk, you're going to impact the uses and livelihoods of businesses for decades that have actually already been here for decades. But when you're looking at changes of this type with a study that goes on for a year or two, and I know Mr. Kleppen will disagree with me, but I always suggest that while these studies are going on, that the first thing you do is, is impose a moratorium on applications coming in so that it levels the playing field. You're not going to have a mad rush of, this is the potential change coming in. It's part of the reason why we're worried about Norton Park right now, you guys, because, you know, if changes go through and there's modifications that would reduce something that a large-scale operator... Um, you know, if changes go through and there's modifications that would reduce something that a large-scale operator. Wouldn't be as amenable to. Again, the fact of the matter is something could come across Steve Kleppen's desk tomorrow. And we, and the and the residents of East Norwalk have absolutely no protection from it. So I I I thank you for um, hearing all of that. Um, the residents of East Norwalk urge you to reconsider some of these items, to remove some altogether. To reduce the size altogether. Um, we also want to make sure that you maintain. Um, the size that would have to come before you for a review. And we also ask that when you're considering special permits in the future, that you consider those thirteen considerations. In favor of the community and not just look at them by saying how many conditions can we impose to make this acceptable. Because honestly, um, if if you're approving an application and you have twenty conditions on it. Um, it kind of means to us that it that it really wasn't suitable for that location in in um, at all to begin with, so. Thank, thank you all very much. Good night.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break before the next speaker?
Yeah, it's eight fifty-six. Uh, why don't we um, uh, take a break until nine-ten? All right, we'll reconvene then. So again, and.
This meeting is being recorded.
Let's uh, see if there are other speakers.
Next we have Diane Lorcella.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. Uh, I'm, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so much. Um, I've been listening intently, uh, have appeared and uh. Observe many of the discussions and meetings about this most important topic. So first, my name is Diane Lorcella. I live at twenty-one Little Fox Lane. Uh, thank you for taking on this initiative. It's complicated and controversial, just my cup of tea. I wanted to thank the speakers also for their thoughtful uh, messages. I didn't agree with all of them. But I I do believe this is a very important topic for our community, our city and its future. Um, I, I uh, I think based upon comments thus far. And uh, my brief comments going forward, I think it's time to go back to the drawing board. It's not quite ready for prime time. I asked this commission not to make a render a decision tonight. Because there are some very good um, questions that were asked, and I agree with those questions, especially the one about proper notice. Um, I do, it does appear that there was proper legal notice. But was the spirit of the reason why we noticed people embraced? I think not. Um, I asked the consultants to help the staff and and your commission answer the concerns posed in order to avoid. Future potential lawsuits because of changes of zones, but mainly to make better explain the changes. And how they will or will not affect folks that own the properties. I do think it is a fair request to list all of the properties that may be affected by. These proposed changes and make a better creative effort to uh, make sure people know about it with enough notice. Here's my premise, and I've said it before, industry is not the enemy in and of itself. It is not a dirty word. As other speakers point out, the latest P O C D mentions industrial values. And for too long, previous commissions and staff and common council people and mayors. And some even now have given away industrial zones to the trends and powerful land use attorneys. Who's whose clients want to build, they can't build in other towns. So that's why we have big box, bouncy houses, sports facilities and apartment complexes on valuable industrial land. Including what had happened on Martin Luther King Drive and Northern Systems. So therefore I ask, we need to better define many more of uh, of the uh. Reasons for certain uses in economic terms, but also in human terms. Let's encourage the current owners to clean up their act. So my first specific thing is on the discussion about contractor yards. I looked at the April sixth memo that Steve Kleppen wrote to you all. And I was disturbed by this seeming willingness to to ask for extreme flexibility. For contractor owner, contractor yard owners. I think we need less flexibility because, and that is the reason why so many in the community. Were up in arms about uh, just getting rid of them. If they were to embrace operating in a cleaner manner. And spending money on that fence line now, they have the money, just haven't had pressure yet, and it's starting to rise. We're looking at people on Meadow Street owners. And uh, Wilson Street, Wilson Ave rather, um, Chestnut Street, Lubrano Place and others. I I want to say that I agree with Attorney Suchi's very articulate discussion about the. Uh, some other ways to make sure our neighborhoods are safe and our businesses are thriving. And it is about the importance of consistent enforcement, and I have spoken about that also before twenty-twenty. On and many a time, especially when you had special permit uh, requests. Um, I hope that after this discussion, I'll add another um, task or initiative. And that is having a enforcement um, retreat or a convocation. Including people in the regulated community, community members, experts on enforcement methods, there's all different kinds. Uh, as well as staff and officials in the city of Norwalk. We really have to up our game. Um, if Mr. Flaherty's chart is correct, you seem to be removing too many uses that will impair how Perry Sono. Um, East Norwalk and um, this and Wall Street can evolve into a modern industrial use. Um, I also wanted to say that we should look at this through a social justice lens. Because there are places, especially in South Norwalk, where I've done professional land use. Um, work with the neighborhoods, we were the ones that brought up the Amic Carding Contractor Yard. That was an enforcement issue that really went got out of hand with a hundred and five dumpsters being placed. Um, let us make good and better use out of uh, making sure that whatever kind of. A map this ends up being with the zones that you add, especially in the contractor yard. Where there are earth materials being stored outside, they met must, not may. They must, and I would like to see this written in and amended, uh, use a physical covers. So that those particular piles will not continue to become a health hazard to the neighbors. As well as the workers on the property, sand or silica dust is a human carcinogen. Um, I also ask that you find better ways of informing neighbors. I know that applicants need to inform only a certain number of abutters. I would ask that you maybe enhance that so that those neighbors, including business neighbors of an applicant. Can give them their peace of mind and try to help them uh, succeed. Um, I agree with many of the speakers. I do want to say those industrial owners that were represented by council, but also they spoke on their own behalf. Please take a look at your properties. I ask all of you to take a look at what is occurring just beyond the residential fence line. Of streets like Lawrence Street. It is horrendous. Um, the, I'm not going to name the two companies that are abutting Lawrence Street. But if they truly say that they are a legacy company, they've provided jobs and this and that. What are you providing by way of air quality, noise problems and 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 other uh, health concerns? Um, I wish that there were a list of more than just what we have in special permit. Um, I also do agree that we shouldn't loosen up some of the review by the staff. And we need fewer, not more, but fewer over the counter approvals for industrial use. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, would you hold up for just a second with uh, the next speaker? Um, it's uh, just about nine-twenty. Um, we're going to, um, I want to finish up our business tonight by ten o'clock. I think uh, four hours of uh, meeting by the commissioner. Uh, the commission uh, is uh, um. Get, getting, get, going too far, asking too much of the commissioners. I think it's very difficult to stay uh, um, keep your concentration for such a. A long period of time. So here's what I'm proposing. We will continue uh, to listen to speakers through uh, nine-forty-five. Uh, at nine-forty-five, uh, we will stop speakers. And uh, we will uh, give Stephen Kleppen uh, an opportunity to uh, respond. To the comments that have been made, uh, and then we'll take care of our administrative business. And uh, adjourn uh, the meeting. Uh, and we will uh, continue this hearing to uh, October sixth. Um, when uh, Stephen will again give his uh, presentation. And we'll um, uh, allow people who have not had an opportunity to speak before. Uh, to speak. In the interim, I'm asking uh, the, I'm sort of a. A belt and suspender sort of guy, so um, I think it makes sense to re-advertise. Uh, the hearings uh, continuing on uh, October sixth. Um, with perhaps um, uh, somewhat wider explanation of. Uh, what the hearing is uh, is about. Uh, and with that, Brian, I'll uh, I'll turn it back to you uh, so that you can allow the next speaker. But I'll uh, stop you at nine-forty-five.
Sure. Uh, next is Kevin Conroy.
Okay, good morning. I mean, good morning. Good evening. Can you hear me, Brian?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. Okay, hi, thank you very much uh, for um, letting me speak. Uh, one on the six.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conroy, can you give us your address, please?
I'm sorry. Uh, this is regarding uh, three hundred Wilson Avenue. Uh, which is where the Sona Weiss House is and multiple other tenants that I am a partner with, with several other people from Norwalk.
Okay.
Um, I want to touch base on notice. Um, I I've been away and then I only got the notice yesterday because it it came to the building. But with like twenty tenants, it got in the wrong mailbox and then I got it yesterday. Um, and found out about the hearing tonight by calling um, a lawyer and he said, yeah, they're going to have the meeting tonight. So I did not get a chance to do a lot of work, so I'm going to be kind of brief. Because I understand you're going to carry on this meeting again, so have an opportunity to study, but a couple.
But you won't, you won't have an opportunity to speak again.
Oh.
So if you feel there is more you're going to want to say, once you've had an opportunity to review materials. I'd suggest you don't speak now and um, uh, study the materials, come back to us on the sixth. Uh, with a more thoughtful presentation.
And thank you so much for guiding me. That is exactly what I will do, so I will be fully informed and and uh, be able to speak a little more accurately about the concerns. That my partners and I have uh, regarding the proposed changes. So I'm going to gracefully say thank you for your time and carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you all.
Okay, next is uh, Dan Zavris.
Yeah, hi, uh, my name is Dan Zavris. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm owner of Odd Job Landscaping and uh, we are located at eighty-nine Day Street, which is on the south side of Day Street, closest to Burrit. We purchased uh, the old class plumbing supply warehouse about seven years ago. And uh, we're currently graded as an industrial one zone. And if any of you remember that site, it was in complete disarray when we took ownership of it. Um, we cleaned up that property, the site, we invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve not only the site, but also the building. Uh, and and you know, now we get this letter, which I actually never got. I was actually, I received a phone call the other day from a friend of mine. And you know, what what people just don't understand is is that. There's going to be a cost associated with trying to chase this all out. Naturally, uh, you know, and I'm a residential landscape contractor. Uh, if our costs go up, your costs are going to go up. It's that simple. You know, we want to be local, we want to keep your costs down, but you know, what's being proposed, some of us may need to leave. Which means that we're going to need to adjust our price, our pricing, you know, much of the problem in in our industry. Are the landscape trucks at residential homes with these two and three and four man operations that are parked all over the streets, that aren't permitted properly. And these are what the true problems are. Um, you know, make them follow the same regulations that we follow. It's only fair. Um, you know, we've been in business for over thirty years and and thankfully, you know, we continue to grow on an annual basis. We employ almost fifty full-time employees and uh, you know, we've considered expanding. Um, we've considered purchasing the property to the north or south of us. Uh, but with what's being downgraded, you know, by us being downgraded, we're not going to be able to expand. And unfortunately, this is going to handcuff us. Uh, with a company of our size, it's almost impossible for us to find a lot. Uh, of the same size or larger that we need to operate our business. Um, and from what you guys are proposing, um, and and the areas that are going to be industrial one. There's just not going to be any space left or it's going to be unreachable financially. So you know, I believe we should be basically rewarded for growing our businesses, not punished because we've been successful. Um, so I would just uh, I just want you guys to to reconsider um, the downgrade on on Day Street as well. Um, and that's all I have for for now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, if anyone else would like to speak, um, you can raise your hand now, otherwise um, the meeting will be continued to the October sixth meeting. Um, which will begin at seven, yeah. And of course, you can always submit written comments to Steve or myself and we'll forward those on to the commission. See, s- let me see. So hand go up and hand go down and see if uh, Steve would like to speak. Are you there, Steve?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
How are you? Uh, this is Steve San Campo. I own the property at one forty-seven South Main Street, uh, which I actually just purchased three months ago. Um, with the intention of knowing that it was industrial one. So now I am caught in a dilemma here. Um, I paid a, you know, premium price for the property. Um, and hoping to grow, uh, I was planning on building a contractor's office on the property. Um, and then I'm, I I only found out about this on Facebook. Um, I'd never received any notification. Um, and so I'm kind of, um, I'm kind of caught in a dilemma here. Um, so if the whole area is going to be declared, you know, as a, as the zoning has changed, what is that going to do to the value of the property now? So, you know, my concerns are the value and, you know, the the purpose of growing, you know, growing the property. So with that said, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Now do one last call for anyone who'd like to speak tonight, otherwise, um, please attend the October sixth meeting. All right, it looks like that's it for tonight, Louis.
Okay. All right, Steve, uh, you want to respond uh, to what you've heard?
Or we can get you out of here a little earlier than you had anticipated too, so. So it's kind of interesting, like, when we first started talking about this process and what, what, how it would probably unfold. We knew it was going to be very messy. Um, this is something, you know, the zoning regulations as a whole haven't been touched. Um, comprehensively in over thirty years at least, probably longer. Um, and I, you know, I, I used to joke around with former staff, like, you know. About planning in general and why wasn't something done? And you know, sometimes it's critical about that, but now I, you know, I kind of see where they were probably a little smarter than me. And they knew to leave well enough, well enough alone at times, because no matter which way you go, somebody's not going to like the decision you make. But but ultimately, um, it it's an exercise that has to get done, in my opinion. I think that there's just a lot of issues here, and you're hearing it from, from both sides, you're hearing, you know. How this is affecting them, but they're not getting the other parts of the spectrum. Where we're getting the complaints on how it's impacting the people that live there. And there's one side that would probably prefer just leave us alone and we'll operate our business, and the other side would say we'd prefer to have your business going. prefer to have your business gone. So how do we strike that balance and, and allow things to continue to operate? The city to grow and also allow the residents that live there are the highest quality of life possible. So that's the balance we're trying to achieve. It, it's not an easy task. Uh, you know, we may not actually get it a hundred percent right, but we'll, that's what we strive, strive to do. Um, we're more than happy, Mr. Chairman, to run another legal notice with, uh, you know, and we don't control where the newspaper puts that. We'll look at beefing up. I'm pretty confident with what we put together, comply statutorily, but we will beef it up, double check with our corporation counsel to make sure, you know, whatever is necessary is in there, plus more. You know, to, I'm going to go in order a little bit, but you know, Ms. Cece made a comment that, you know, we relied on the neighborhood groups word out. No, that, that was actually, um, you know, in talking with, with the commission about using all the resources to get the word out and that was suggested that we came up with, well, we can ask the neighborhood groups if they'll help spread the word. We did the same thing with our listing of churches and other groups that we have contact with. No idea if everyone honors our request or not, but we asked them as other sources of output to, to, to spread the word if they wouldn't mind. So, you know, that was an add-on to what we would have done anyway. Something else to keep in mind that, you know, there, there was failed language in, in, that was mentioned several times. This commission and any planning and zoning commission has very broad powers when it comes to determining what's appropriate and what should be included in your zoning regulations and your zoning map. Especially when you're acting in the legislative capacity. In this instance, there was, uh, you know, whi- which we tried to provide that clear nexus and clear path from the citywide plan down to the regulation. So when you write the citywide plan and your citywide plan has recommendations on evaluating your industrial zones and, and, and conducting a study on those industrial zones, then you conduct that study and then you come up with recommendations in the study and then regulations that in our opinion are consistent with what's in the study, then I think you've, you've more than met your requirements in terms of compliance with any kind of zoning amendment or zoning map amendment. I think you far exceeded what, what, what's required. So I'd just like to point out that out for the record. Um, and I'm going to go school in order quickly. It won't take long. In order, in response to some of the speakers that brought up questions. The last gentleman who spoke, and this was also the first gentleman, I think, was Mr. Cunto, talking about South Main Street. So the changes initially on South Main Street, we had actually proposed that all to go to I two. Um, we weren't going to change a lot of the things in and around Chestnut Street. We're going to leave things I one. And that was the first discussion we had with the Economic and Community Development Committee of Council. They brought up concerns about that, those specific streets in there and they wanted those changes made. So those changes were made in response to comments we received there. Further south from there, the changes on Woodward Avenue specifically and then around where the new school is going to come, that came out at a later date. Once the school was there, council got very concerned about the location and, and requested we make those changes. So those, those were not just done a, a, off of wind. Those were done after consultation with the other bodies and, and I, you know, when we brought that up previously here, I don't believe there was any concern about those changes made. I understand the specific instances with individual properties becoming non-conforming. We've discussed this at length in terms of what your rights are, even Attorney Suchi reiterated that, you know, they, they are allowed to operate in perpetuity, you know, going forward. There's not, nothing on that front changes. Uh, you know, a couple of things that, that were mentioned specifically about, you know, the, the contractor yards and what they do. Regardless of whether you consider enacting that clause that we discussed for a little while, the contractors continue to operate exactly as they're, as they're operating today. If they have a one acre site and they're utilizing the full one acre and have piles in one location and trucks parked in another, there's nothing that's going to stop them. So the fully utilized site today is the fully utilized site tomorrow. There's no change or impact based on that. Um, Attorney Suchi had, had, had stressed that, you know, more enforcement is needed. Ms. Loricella has said that and they both have stated that in the past, you know. Of course, there always could be improvements and additional enforcement done. But to solely lay it on the feet of enforcement not being done is the reason there are issues is kind of a ridiculous statement. If, if everybody was behaving correctly, then we wouldn't need enforcement in the first place. If all the contractors acted professionally, like many of them do, we wouldn't have to go out there and check quarterly because we do go out and proactively sweep the, the larger yards, the ones, not only the ones we've had issues with, but all the ones in general to make sure pile heights are met, covers are on, or watering is taking place to do that. And we also sweep many other neighborhoods where we know that there's a preponderance of, um, commercial vehicles that are brought home illegally. So we try to sweep them and round them up and, and get them out of the neighborhoods as best we can. It, it's, it's a tough task. My former colleague, Mike Rin, used to refer to it as whack-a-mole because you, you remove them from one place and they just move down the street and you have to start the entire process over again. So enforcement can be improved and stepped up certainly, but you can't differentiate contractor yard A from contractor yard B. You have to treat all of them equally. And if, if one is misbehaving, and this is the case in anywhere in society, if, if one group is misbehaving, everybody gets treated the same. You enact the laws to treat everybody the same. And if you're not misbehaving, then you're not going to get an enforcement letter. I think that's pretty clear. There were some other comments brought up about, uh, and I believe, um, was brought up about some of the uses not being job generators or job creators. And so it's would, would be contrary to the intent of the plan. I, I don't think every use that was outlined or is within the regulations has to be a use that's a job generator. We, we fully recognize that some uses are necessary. You need to have warehouse space. I'm sorry. It's, it just has to happen. And trucks do frequent the warehouses. I don't think you can eliminate truck traffic entirely. It's just a fact of life. It's changed the way we've done, um, uh, you know, everybody gets Amazon deliveries, you know, I get too many a week at my house. Everybody's getting stuff delivered. It's, it's just a fact of life. How do we control that? How do we regulate that and deal with it? It is kind of the task at hand. Uh, the Mr. Blank, Attorney Blank had brought up several regulation changes and I think which have merit. You know, since we're continuing, we could probably, um, take a further dive at those and, um, you know, make sure they're appropriate for consideration and, and put that into a revised packet and post that once the the edits have been made, um, to correct a couple of things that were misstated. There isn't a seventy percent reduction in the amount of industrial land in the city. There's a seventy percent reduction in the amount of industrial one-zone land in the city. Um, one thing I didn't highlight, which I think is very important to point out, um, we have actually increased um, areas for industrial use, as we talked about in the Perry Avenue, Kane and Ave areas, where prior, previously those were business two, which had very strict limitations on what you could do on the commercial side. So we've allowed that. Furthermore, in the business one, in business two zones, we've also allowed boutique and very light manufacturing to occur with condition. So that's opening up further avenues for commercial opportunities in those zones. Um, so I think that's a plus for the city as a whole. One thing that was brought up, and I forgot the gentleman who brought it up. Uh, we'll, we'll double check the Lexington Avenue, um, uses through there in terms of how many units on those properties, whether it should be C-zone or D-zone, but we can easily, um, fact check that. I imagine there's a lot of properties in there that have a lot more units than they're supposed to too, so that, you know, you can't go out there and look at what's there. It, it really matters what's legally there. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to make that determination and advise you accordingly. You know, that, that there, and this goes back to Meadow Street and also like Lean, Kasuth, LeBron, and all those areas. A lot of the feedback we got on there, a lot of people say, well, these are uses that were appropriate or considered appropriate. Well, we're getting feedback that a lot of people that, A, living around those areas, interact in and around those areas or want to see that develop, don't feel that those uses are appropriate now. Um, and, and I, I'm a proponent of not eliminating these uses entirely because I understand we need them. It's just a matter of where they're located and what parameters we put around them. So they operate in a, in a fashion where they can make as much money and be as successful as possible while not impacting the rights of everybody else that has to, um, you know, you know, deal with, with the consequences of things. To touch on Norden briefly, um, I, I mentioned something Brian and I were kicking around the idea a little earlier. Perhaps we could look at, um, a specific overlay for Norden to, um, you know, I, 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 I don't, I have, this is more of a legal question. I don't think you could put a moratorium on an individual property. I'm not sure how that would flesh out legally. I can run that by corporation counsel, um, but, but there might be another avenue in terms of an overlay zone where we look at that site, um, specifically to, uh, you know, because it is a very unique site, special site. Ideally, there would be, um, direct highway access in both directions to that site to get the vehicles off the roads and right onto the highway, but that's not a reality at the moment. So, so we have to deal with, um, how, how things are currently. Just on that, I'm just about done. Um, you know, and, and with all due respect to, um, Ms. Loricella, e- every time we have a public comment, it seems like the, the mantras go back to the drawing board. I think, you know, there's no point in going back to the drawing board. Some, some changes, sure, we'll, we'll, we'll make some changes based on tonight and as I stated, we'll renotice this to, you know, make sure, you know, if anybody's missed it. Uh, if not, please, you know, spread the word to whomever you feel is also affected by this and I'm happy to take any comments. I think um, we've had conversations with a lot of folks since this was first floated, uh, you know, eight months ago. So it's not like this has been a secret. It's been out there. It's been on commissioned agendas for probably eight months, so it's, it's not a secret. Um, but we can always improve on, um, you know, our outreach and we think about that a lot, uh, and happy to take any other considerations on that piece. Um, and lastly, I'm going to close with the same thing I said ten times tonight. Any business, whether you're a contractor yard or not a contractor yard, that's legally operating today, you can continue to operate in perpetuity, regardless of whether you sell the property to somebody else or not, that use can continue. Can't take that right away. There's no intent to take that right away from you. So if you're fully utilizing your property as you're using it today, that same, um, same right you have today is the same right you have going forward. I'm happy to take any questions, but I don't have any other formal responses.
Do we have any, um, any questions for Steve?
I have one.
You go ahead, Mike.
Right here. Is, is there any legal precedent for, uh, doing a retroactive zoning application on a uh, changed zone property? And I'm just thinking of the speaker who said he just bought a property a few months ago under one zone to find out it's going to be changed. What, how, you know, unless he speeds up a process really quick and gets an application and really fast before a change is made. Uh, is, do you know of any precedent where he would have a right to develop that property under the, the, you know, the existing zoning that he bought it under? I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. It seems like a dilemma.
Yeah, they, they would, uh, they would have to have a complete application submitted prior to the enactment of the new regulations, whenever that was. For that property specifically, I believe, I didn't get to look at the zoning map, but I'm if my memory serves, the front half of it is residentially zoned and the rear half is, um, in the I-one zone and that was an area specifically targeted by, um, common council to downzone. They just felt that that was not appropriate for the neighborhood, didn't want to see proliferation of, uh, some of the heavier commercial uses in that area.
All right. Thanks.
Any, anything else for Steve? All right then, um, we will, uh, continue, uh, the hearing, uh, to the sixth. Uh, for, um, those of us on the commission, uh, we have a joint meeting at six P M. On the sixth. And this meeting will be reconvened, uh, at seven P M. Uh, and I am fully expecting, um, that we'll vote on this matter um, on the sixth. Okay, um, we do have just a little bit of, um, uh, additional business. The first, the first is the appointment of nominating committee. You may remember Mike was, uh, on Martha's Vineyard at our last meeting. Um, and I didn't hear back from him on whether the, um, uh, committee I had appointed, which, uh, which was, uh, Galen and, uh, JJ and Richard, uh, would be acceptable. Shortly after the meeting, I did get an email from him and he said it was fine. I guess that was, uh, conveyed, uh, to the nominating committee. Uh, they met and they've, uh, put together, um, a, a list of, uh, recommended, uh, officers for, uh, the year. Um, if we find that acceptable, uh, the officers will not take office uh, until, uh, that October sixth, uh, meeting because that is considered our, our annual meeting. So with that, Richard, I'll, I'll ask you what the recommendations of, uh, the committee were.
Well, after discussion, um, we felt that, um, the combined commission was still feeling its way through and that, um, we appreciated your steady hand at the tiller. So we were nominating you for an additional, um, term as chairman. Uh, Mike Muschak as vice chairman and Nick Cantor as secretary.
Okay. That all, all sounds, uh, good to me. Um, however, before we vote on this matter, I have to ask, uh, i- are there, uh, any members of, uh, the commission um, who wish to be, uh, chair of, uh, the commission? If that is the case, um, we, we will hold up an individual vote, uh, on that position. There anyone else who wishes to be considered, uh, for chair? All right. If not, we'll move to the vice chair. Mike Muschak is, um, being recommended as, uh, vice chair.
I graciously accept.
Is there, is there, uh, anyone else who wishes to be considered for that office? All right. If not, uh, we'll move on to, uh, secretary. We're sorry to see Galen, um, uh, leave us as secretary, but I think Nick is a, a terrific, uh, uh, replacement. Uh, is there anyone on the commission who wishes to serve as secretary? All right. Seeing, um, no one, um, I would, um, ask for a motion to approve, uh, the recommendations of the nominating committee.
Can we move?
Yes, you can. Uh, Galen moves, Richard seconds. Again, I think we can do this with a, with a hand raise. All those in favor. Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, thank you. Um, I um, look forward to continuing to work, uh, with, with you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Um, okay, moving on. Approval of minutes for the September eighth meeting. I have a motion. Uh, Darius, uh, has moved. Is there a second? Galen seconds. Again, with a hand raise. All those in favor. I, um, comments of the director.
I had two, forgot one, so to your benefit, I guess. Just to give you a quick update that the, uh, still working with the consultant on the zoning regs, but I think we are down to like the last couple of issues. The target is mid-November with what we're going to probably do is there'll be initial presentation um, to the commission on the regulations and from that point on, we'll start with the public outreach component where, uh, you know, uh, probably draft Brian and somebody else from the office to, to go around and uh, present to whomever would like us to present to them. So I imagine there'll be a lot of groups that will want to get kind of a preview and overview. Um, the consultant's feeling is that it's best if they walk you through the regulations a little bit. The consultant's feeling is that it's best if they walk you through the regulations a little bit to give you like a kind of a a plan to follow and how to like start looking at it. And then, you know, then it'll get released and you'll have plenty of time to get confused on what you're looking at.
Steve, I, I hate to say this, but I remembered what your second item is. It's the ADU.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, so I believe you got an email with materials yesterday with it, which contained a letter from council regarding recently passed ADU legislation. They had some concerns raised. Obviously, they're still in the process of determining whether they're going to follow the opt-out clause or not. I, I think their intent is to do so, but you know, they haven't taken formal action yet. There were some considerations that they brought to Brian and my attention in terms of process and in terms of some of the standards that were in the ADU legislation, which in, in many ways were a lot of the things that you guys debated internally before, for the vote. So Brian and I, you know, put our heads together and made some edits, which I, I think satisfies council's concerns. And they were forwarded out at the bottom of the attachment. I don't think there's anything in there that's too onerous in terms of what an applicant might face, but the, the kind of, we could bring it up at a later meeting if you wanted to add it on to an agenda item to discuss it and then decide whether you want to move forward with those changes or perhaps wait till the broader regulations are done. You have a couple of different options on that.
I mean, I can't speak for anyone else. My preference is what we should try if we can to handle it while it's still fresh in our minds rather than, rather than having to go, go through it all over again. I don't know how others feel.
Well, I, I for one have a comment that I wanted to make about the proposed change that I read, if that's appropriate at this time.
Why not?
And I'd, I'd like to make it because, you know, I think that it's important for everybody on the commission to look at two things. The proposed change would be to require a site plan review. And at least in my reading of the site plan review versus the special permit application, there's virtually no additional burden on the applicant to go through a special permit application that there is with the site plan review. The big difference is that a site plan review, our basic job is to listen and see if the request that's being made satisfies the zoning regulation. And if it does, we have to approve it. As opposed to the site plan applica-, or the special permit application, which requires us to do the same thing, but allows us to have some input to make suggestions to make it better for, in terms of what the effects on the neighbors would be. As far as the fees are concerned, whether the applicant was going to do this over the counter or whether it was going to be a site plan or a special permit application, the biggest expense is an A2 survey and that has to happen on any one of those applications. So I don't believe that a site plan, a special permit application would be any more of a burden to a homeowner that wanted to do this. And the fee schedule could reflect the simple aspect of the application. There's no law that says that the applicant for this on the special permit would have to pay $1,500. It could be $150. So I, I believe that we should all take a look and see what the difference is between the two. Because in my humble opinion, even though we spent all of this time tonight on the zone change for the industrial areas, this zone change, this, this new regulation changes virtually every single family residential zone in Norwalk, the multifamily, and I think it's a monumental change.
All right, I, I don't want to get into a debate, but I did let Richard speak, so Galen, go ahead. You're muted, Galen.
I'm sorry, but I think we've been through this. We have debated this. We all voted. And I think now we put this behind us. We have made a decision. And I think revisiting the whole thing and going through the whole debate again is unnecessary. Burton stuff, you know, I mean, we, we have already made a decision on this. We don't usually go back and make decisions again on things we've made a decision about.
Galen, well, that, well, that's true. We're being, we're being, basically being told by the council that this is what they want. Once we act, they act. They can, they can shoot this down if they're, they don't find what we've proposed acceptable. So I think there, there needs to be some further discussion, specifically what, what, what they're asking for. I don't think we have, we, we need to open up this entire debate all over again. But I think we have to give some consideration to what they're telling us they, they want us to do.
I guess we have to do. Just so I'm perfectly clear.
I'm sorry?
Tell me again what it is they're telling us to do.
Take a look, take a look at what, at the emails they've sent us, which contain their recommended language. I mean, that's all I can tell you, because I, I, I wouldn't be confident in telling you exactly what the language is.
I don't, I don't recall.
Go ahead, Jack, change how you were, had your hand raised before me.
Yeah, I, I did read the outline and it sounded as though there was some overlap. They were asking for some clarity in, in the, the resolution. And I do believe we discussed that. Maybe there needs to be better coordination in our intent. Like, I mean, I thought it was black and white, but it sounded as though they needed more clarity on it. I mean, that's how I interpret it. And so is it, is it possible that we can have a discussion to make sure that we're all on the same page? And we're not spending valuable time, you know, that, you know, chewing and digesting the same issue over and over again and just move on?
Steve, Steve has hand raised. Nick, I think you had your hand raised and Mike, I know you had your hand raised. So why don't we go in that order?
Thanks, I, I just wanted two quick points. So the, the, I, I agree with Mr. Rowena for the most part. However, the site plan application process would allow you to put conditions on the application like screening, fencing, those kind of things. So if it was over the counter, we wouldn't, staff wouldn't have that ability to do that. But the commission could say, well, wait a minute. You know, this is like a wide open area. You've got to put a 10-foot-high hedge row along the whole back of the property or something along those lines. A couple of other things that are in the changes were related to increasing some of the setbacks in the larger lot zones to be more consistent with what we require for accessory structures now. So I think that was a positive change. And my last point is that all the zones that are allowing the detekt, already allow attached ADU. So it's not, it's not going to be like a density increaser at all, just.
Nick?
I was going to ask for clarification. So, so how does the process work from here in the sense of council has by end of year to either opt out or default into the state's law? Is that right?
Yes.
And, and then the path here is either we don't change what we proposed already or change it. It goes back to them and then they can, if not change, they can, so let's say we do nothing. They would then have to either opt into, opt out of this, the state's law or opt into it. And opting in is more restrictive than what we have, right?
Yeah, so the, the, as far as the amendment to the regulations that you made, there's really no formal council action related to that now. They're, they're, they, in their letter, they're raising concerns that they have and would, and would like you, and things they'd like you to reconsider. So if you thought that those had merit, you would start with the, it would be like a brand-new zoning amendment application. You'd have to schedule a public hearing, take public input and then vote yea or nay on the changes. That, that would be the same process. So they, they still have to act on the opt-out regardless of what you have passed or not passed.
Steve, if, if do they, do they have the authority to change what we have decided?
I don't believe so.
So they have only two options. One is to let what we've approved stand. Or the second is to opt into the state plan.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, any, any individual can bring about an amendment to the zoning regulations. So if somebody could come in and do that on their own volition to say, we want it. I don't like your ADU language. I would like to change it to this. So it's the same kind of process.
Okay, Mike?
Well, it sounds, first of all, I have a question for Steve. If the, it's site plan review that they were asking for, we have the, don't we have the discretion at that point to decide if a public hearing is required or not? And as, as a special permit, a public hearing is required. I, I don't think we can waive a public hearing for a special permit that defeats the purpose.
Correct on both.
So the, to me, a special permit to address Richard's, because Richard, I think Steve us said earlier, just to reiterate, that you, that a site plan review does allow conditions that you thought was only possible under a special permit. So a site plan review does have conditions that we, we can, we can put on. And my feeling is a required public hearing hits neighbor against neighbor and suddenly creates a fear of someone having to go before all their neighbors who are going to say, probably no, we don't want this. And they're going to say, well, I'm not going to do this, and it's going to discourage exactly what the state regulation is trying to encourage.
Exactly.
So, so I think this, but I think the site plan review that the council had, isn't that, isn't that what they were asking for in their letter back to us? I think that's, that's reasonable in, in terms of giving us, I mean, we didn't have site plan review in our, what we had passed, right?
That's correct.
So is, is site plan review acceptable? I mean, I, I don't see that, that, I think if that pleases the council and Richard, that, that gives you the ability to condition something. You had said something, but you're muted. I don't know what it was. Anyway, that, that, then I would consider that.
I thought it was a reasonable compromise. I, I, I don't think it's as good as the site plan review, but it's something.
You mean a special permit. It's not as good as a special.
It's a site plan review, right?
Yeah.
Why don't you make sure that we all, that everyone has a copy of the information from the council? We can talk about it perhaps after our meeting on the sixth informally again, and then talk about exactly how it is we want to proceed.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll send it out tomorrow or Friday at the latest. We'll resend it out again separately, so you have it just kind of front and center. And then we'll add it as an agenda item at the back of the meeting for chat.
Okay.
But I, I just have a question. So in, in the interest of time, why can't we, why can't we implement that site plan review into the resolution, into the?
We have to have a public hearing to act on this.
So anytime you change any text in the regulations, it's an amendment and it's the same process where we have to send out all the notices again. So it's, there's a lot of steps and timelines that we have to adhere to.
But, you know, we have a little, we have a little bit of breathing space.
I just want to say one thing quickly and I won't say anything more, is that the whole reason the legislature passed this passed this legislation on accessory dwelling units was to make it was to provide more affordable housing and make it easier for people to have accessory dwelling units and to make it easier and possible in some cases to have detached ones. So that's the purpose that the state legislature was trying to fill. And I think we need to be cognizant of that, you know? I think that was a good purpose myself.
Okay, let's move on. We have one more. Well, any further comments from commission members?
I agree with Galen, so that's it.
Okay. Then I am looking for a motion to adjourn. JJ made the motion. I'll assume that Galen seconded. And
Darius is trying to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Darius.
Yeah, I had one question for Steve, which was just an update on 22 Lounges. And I, we had something on Shorehaven Road had been brought before the commission, I believe, a month or so ago. I was just wondering if you could speak to those two.
Yeah, for, for Lounges, the, you know, we've been going back and forth. Michelle and I have been back and forth with the applicant about 20 times. I really don't want to get into too many details since it's a public hearing item. But we have tried to encourage them to withdraw their application and resubmit or seek a variance. But I think they, they sought to get a continuance and come back to you at a later date. So you, you, you may see it again. I just don't know when. And I can't remember what the one was on Shorehaven. I don't remember which one that was. Brian, do you have any recollection?
That's the one Amelia's working on. She's just waiting for some additional drawings to actually show that the house complies with the zoning regs before they come back to you guys.
And 77 North Water is just an issue between 77 North Water and one of their neighboring buildings. They, they just want to work that out before they come, come before us. Okay, all in favor? We're adjourned. See you all on the sixth.
Okay, bye-bye.
Take care.